Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is my honor and privilege to call the Tallahassee City Commission meeting for October 25th to order. It is 3:00 in the afternoon. This is a wonderful time of the year. It is the homecoming season. We just had a wonderful Florida State University homecoming week last week. We are in the midst of FAMU Homecoming Week this week, and it's just a wonderful time to be here. It is my honor and privilege to introduce who is also relatively new to our community, Reverend Lonny Lacy, who will be providing the invocation. He is the Reverend from St. John's Episcopal Church. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand. Reverend Lacy, great to see you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for this day, for this city, and for the gift of life that you have given us. Lord, we ask your blessing on the city of Tallahassee, on our leaders, and on every person, young and old, rich and poor, who call Tallahassee home. Lord, you have made this a city in a day in which the sun is shining and the breeze is blowing. This is a city in a day in which babies are being born and students, young and old, are learning. This is a city in a day in which people are loving and helping and hoping and trying to do the good. So, Lord, whatever our hardships or our challenges may be, work through the love, work through the hope, work through the good within us, and help us to be the city you know we can be. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, Reverend, once again, let me be one of the first to welcome you to Tallahassee. I know that you have relocated to St. John's Episcopal Church, which is one of the older churches in our community as well. We are thrilled to have you here, and thank you so much for joining us and providing the invocation today. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've got a full schedule today. We've got a regularly scheduled City Commission meeting. We have a public hearing at 6:00. Colleagues, there is no doubt in my mind that we'll be able to get through all of the business prior to the public hearing and take a break before coming back for the public hearing. If we have time, we'll take up unengaged speakers, and we can do the sharing of ideas as well. Let me start off the meeting as always, reminding each and every one of us that we have a civic duty to perform at our best. Let's set the example, not only for everyone in the chambers today, but for everyone that is watching this City Commission meeting on TV, of how civility is done right and how we do it here at the city of Tallahassee, and the fact that we can set the example for everyone that is watching this meeting. With that, Mr. Manager, let's move through the agenda. Do we have any agenda modifications?
No, sir.
Excellent. We have three presentations, proclamations, so if any of my colleagues would like to join me down, you're more than welcome to. I would like to invite all of the men and women that are here today with the Handel Me With Care Dolls Foundation, please come join us down front, please. Come on, is Sandra here with us?
Yeah, yes.
Excellent. Sandra Collins, come on down. Thanks for joining us. Ladies and gentlemen, a proclamation from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee. Whereas domestic violence is an epidemic in our nation, state, and county, resulting in thousands of battered victims, traumatized children, and broken families each year, crossing all economic, racial, and social barriers. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates the individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas domestic violence is both a violation of an individual's personal agency, security, humanity, and is a crime which impacts society as a whole, we conclude that perpetrators of domestic violence must be held accountable for their actions. And whereas it is imperative to recognize the compassion and dedication of these individuals who provide services to victims of domestic violence and work to increase public understanding of this significant problem, and whereas everyone has a moral obligation to work to prevent and address the brutal and destructive efforts of domestic violence, protecting vulnerable members of our society, helping to make ending domestic violence a national priority, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is an opportunity to remember the victims of domestic violence, support the survivors to ensure their safety and well-being, and increase awareness to reduce incidences. Now therefore, I, John Evans Daly, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and ask all of our citizens to join together in supporting victims of domestic violence and actively participate in sending a loud and clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated. Read into the record in front of each and every one of you, signed and dated with my signature, I would like to ask Ms. Sandra Collins to please come forward on behalf of the organization to accept this proclamation. Thank you so much for being here, and we'd love to turn over for a few comments.
Well, I thank you, Mayor, and the commissioners, and everyone in special places, and all of my team that stands with me and support me. Domestic violence is not something easy. It's not only that you come forth and say, "I'm a victim, survivor, and advocate," but to fight for those behind the scene. We know funding is limited. For 22 years, I've been on this journey to fight for domestic and sexual abuse, and out of the 22 years, we've only received $3,000 in funding. But because of my heart and my passion to do the work and to bring a change, and to bring businesses who have joined us together to make a change, it's not always about funding, it's about the heart. And that's why with that, we want to do something for you, Mayor. Because when you first came in, I always saw pink all over the city in October, and I wanted some purple. So I kept coming with, pretend Diane William Cox asking, "What can we do to make the city of Tallahassee purple?" And they said, "Sandra, there's nothing we can do." But every year, I was back in the commission meeting asking again. And so finally, when you came in, I brought it back again. He said, "Well, let's just change the lights and make it purple." So I thank God for that, that this week, the city hall is lit up purple at night to bring a domestic violence awareness to the city, and for that, you have a heart. So I will, Handel Me With Care, would like to present you as well with the Heart Award.
Oh, wow. Oh, wow.
Having a heart against domestic violence.
Wonderful. Oh, thank you so much. Can we get a picture?
One more.
Got it?
And for the 22 years. Through thick and thin, he served, he do the nae nae, he do everything that we need him to do. He's been there. He's been my friend. He's been a commissioner. In my days, I wanted to give up and keep my journey going. When I met Commissioner Richardson, I was a victim of sexual violence, and my story became nationally known, but trying to find faces of people who believe in you, especially male. You can find females all day, but you just want that male to encourage you, and you were my encourager, along with so many other people. He did not shun me because of my background, who I was, or what had happened to me. He stood there as a friend. So with that, I want to present you also with the Heart Award.
Thank you.
And it's that for having a heart to do what you do, being also, you're telling us your story this week, that you were a child and went through domestic violence. So it's about having a heart.
I wasn't violent. I watched my mom and dad.
And so our mission is for the city of Tallahassee, we're asking you to give us your heart, have a heart against domestic violence.
Welcome. Can we get a picture?
Yeah.
Can we get a picture? Oh, Sandra.
Those students, the young people that you see in the purple shirts are my students from Kingdom Life, our preparatory academy, and we've been partnering with Handel Me With Care Foundation, educating students about the importance of domestic violence and breaking the unhealthy cycles that many of them may have seen in their families, and we're honored to be here tonight.
Where's Angel? Come on, come on, Angel.
Angel isn't Angel.
Yep. Angel Charlton, part of the city of Tallahassee family. This is a fun one. Come on, and let's bring the whole team up. That's right. Here we go. This is going to be a fun one. And by the way, on behalf of the commission, thanks for everything y'all do. We certainly do appreciate it. You take care of us, you take care of those that have already retired from the city, and thank you so very much. All right, National Retirement Security Month. Ladies and gentlemen, from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas National Retirement Security Month is a national effort to raise public awareness about the importance of saving for retirement at every level in your working career. And whereas people in the United States are living longer and have increased needs for retirement income, and whereas all workers, including local and state government employees, private sector employees, employees of tax-exempt organizations, and self-employed individuals can benefit from increased awareness of the need to save for retirement. And whereas encouraging employees to bring their future into focus during National Retirement Security Month and throughout their career can help them better prepare for retirement. And whereas many employees may not be taking advantage of workplace retirement plans at all, or to the full extent allowed by the plans under the federal law. And whereas the National Retirement Security Month reminds us of the importance of adequate retirement savings and the need to take advantage of the smallest amount of savings for the betterment of your future. And whereas managing your retirement resources throughout an individual's retirement years is just as important as saving funds prior to retirement. And whereas October is the month observed throughout the nation to raise awareness and promote retirement options available at every point in your career. And whereas all city of Tallahassee employees and citizens throughout our community can benefit from an increased awareness of the need to plan and save for retirement, and from the availability of tax-advantaged retirement savings vehicles to assist them in saving for retirement. Now therefore, I, John Evans Daly, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize the month of October as National Retirement Security Month and call upon all employers, employees, and citizens throughout our community to take the time to review your retirement portfolios, to ensure appropriate retirement savings vehicles are being utilized to their fullest potential. Read into the record in front of each and every one of you with my signature, John Daly, dated October 25th, 2023. Once again, it's an honor to present this proclamation, Angel, to you and your entire team, and thank you so much for all the great work that y'all do. Please, couple of words.
Yes, I already know I always have something to say, right? Well, first and foremost, good afternoon, and thank you, Mayor, for affirming this proclamation. The Retirement Division appreciates your leadership in bringing the importance of saving for retirement to the forefront of our community. We thank also the city treasurer clerk, who is my direct report, for listening and providing the fortitude for this proclamation request. A special thank you to all of the appointed officials for being the catalyst and sounding board, and not only supporting this initiative for retirement readiness reviews throughout our organization, but also propelling this framework to prepare and educate our members. When you hear the word retirement, what comes to mind? For many, the term retirement is often scary, unthinkable, and unbearable. Some think of retirement as a far-fetched phenomenon, out of reach, and some, some can't wait to reach it because they prepare for it. Are you aware that 72% of baby boomers, those born between 1946 and 1964, have not yet planned for retirement? And only 19% of Generation Xers, those born between 1965 and 1980, are confident enough that they're on the right track for saving for retirement? So think about it and ask yourself, how do I measure up when it comes to saving for retirement? Today, we declare the Retirement Division a call for action. We challenge each of you and those in our community to take a moment and review your financial status, whether it's with your employer, your financial planner, or your financial institution with your bank. We urge all of you to do yourself a service by taking the time to review and save. It doesn't take much. It's the first step, is getting started. If you save, you can plan, and if you plan, you can make choices you otherwise would not have to maximize your final career as a retiree. And that's what creates a happy retirement. And in closing, and as a friendly reminder by the late Benjamin Franklin, and I paraphrase, a penny saved today is worth two pennies tomorrow. So let's get to saving, and happy National Retirement Security Month.
All right. Thank you. Okay, get my proclamation. Y'all heard Angel. Go check your plan now, all right?
And I welcome to your club when you get there.
All right. Oh, this is a special proclamation, and this proclamation, actually, after the proclamation, we're going to have a presentation as well. But I would like to ask our executive director of COCA, Kathleen Spiehard, to please come join me with our special friend, Randy Cohen, who is the vice president of Research for the Americans for the Arts, based in Washington, DC, has joined us today. I know that lunch was absolutely phenomenal. I'm sorry I had to leave a little early and miss the program, but I know it was great. Randy, welcome back to Tallahassee. Kathleen, great to see you as well. Ladies and gentlemen, from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas October is National Arts and Humanities Month, a collective recognition of the importance of culture in America, reestablished in 1993 by Americans for the Arts and National Arts Partners as a month-long celebration of arts and the humanities. And whereas Americans for the Arts, the nation's leading arts research and advocacy organization, conducted its sixth benchmark study on the national economic and social impact of the nonprofit arts industry in 373 participating study regions across the United States, releasing this report in October. And whereas the Arts and Economic Impact Prosperity VI Study found that the nonprofit arts industry generates $151.7 billion annually in economic activity and supports 2.6 million jobs from large urban to small rural communities, and that the nonprofit arts industry annually returns $19.2 billion in federal income taxes, $5.5 billion in state government revenue, and $4.3 billion in local government revenue. And whereas the Arts and Economic Impact Prosperity VI Study found that the nonprofit arts industry in Tallahassee generates $203.9 million annually in economic activity and supports 2,930 jobs, and that the nonprofit arts industry annually returns $6.8 million in local government revenue. And whereas the Arts and Economic Prosperity VI Study collected extensive survey data from more than 16,399 arts organizations and 224,677 audience attendees nationwide, and from 98 local arts organizations and 840 local attendees. And whereas, as demonstrated by the Arts and Economic Prosperity VI Study, the nonprofit arts in Tallahassee substantially contributes to the local economy. Now therefore, I, John Evans Daly, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby celebrate and recognize October as National Arts and Humanities Month. Read into the record in front of each and every one of you, signed with my signature, dated October 25th, 2023. Thank you so much for coming down to receive this proclamation. Kathleen, I tell you what, I will give it to you, we're going to bring another one up as well, or you can pass along, we'll give one for you as well. Kathleen, please join us at the podium. Of course, Randy, we'd love to have some comments from you.
Exactly. So I just want to thank the city of Tallahassee. I want to thank the city commission, and especially, I want to thank all of you in the community for all your support of arts and culture. It's because of you that we are here today. You can hear, there's many, many reasons and ways that arts and culture impacts us through our programming, through quality of life, and especially through economic development and social impact. We're really honored to have a partner in the city to work with us on this study, and our partner, Americans for the Arts, Mr. Randy Cohen, who is vice president of research, has graciously joined us today and tomorrow to travel around the city, to see our beautiful city on this amazing day and this amazing weather, and not only partake of all the arts, culture, social impact, and the economics of this area, but also to meet specifically with the community and spread this good news. There is going to be a presentation tonight at 5:30 at Mission San Luis, and we're going to be talking about not only local impact, but statewide impact numbers. It's amazing, that's all I'm going to say. I don't want to be a spoiler alert, and you are welcome to come. It's free to the public, starts at 5:30, and 6:00, the program begins, so we would love to also see you there. And I want to turn this over to Randy now to give some other comments.
Randy, welcome to Tallahassee.
Thank you, thank you. It's great to be back to Tallahassee, native Floridian, even though I just came to you via Washington, DC. I just hope everybody knows how great of an arts community Tallahassee is. There are so many cultural opportunities across the community. That shows up in the data. My message today really is to say thank you, commissioners, and to tell you that your investment in the arts is supporting quality of life, more livable communities, it's creating the places we want to live and work, but the fact is, it's also supporting jobs and generating revenue to government, and it's driving tourism. So this is a good news story. Thanks so much for having me.
Absolutely. Can we get a picture? Yeah. I know you have a presentation on behalf of the Americans for the Arts. Again, thank you so much for your research, both nationwide, but also providing this window into our community, reaffirming our support for the arts, both here locally as well. Floor is yours, sir.
Thanks so much for having me, and again, I gave a little tip to my reason for being here today, to say thank you for your support, for your investment and leadership in the arts. Arts organizations really depend on the city's support and funding to make the arts accessible to the whole community. And, you know, the arts inspire us, they engage us, they, you know, they bring us joy, they create the communities we want to live and work in, but the fact is, arts organizations are also businesses. They employ people locally, they purchase goods and services from other businesses in the community. Arts organizations are members of the Chamber of Commerce, and they help drive tourism to the region. Arts organizations are good business citizens. Now, every time we go to an arts event, we have event-related spending, that's what we call it, right? You know, arts organizations have an impact, you know, just because of their spending, but few industries generate that of audience spending. Think of the last time you went to an arts event. You know, maybe you paid for parking, you had dinner, maybe dessert after the show, you got little ones, you know, you pay for babysitting when you get home. So there's all that economic activity. And what we found is the arts organizations themselves, $181 million in spending in 2022, last year. Arts organizations spending money here in the community, and then that generated additional $85.9 million in event-related spending. That's $204 million, as you referenced. What's the economic impact of that? Well, the first thing we look at is jobs, 2,930 jobs. Now let me tell you something, arts organizations, we think of them as like, well, they employ musicians, and actors, and curators, and designers, but the fact is, they also employ accountants, and auditors, and plumbers, and electricians, and security, and marketing people. Arts organizations employ people across the community. Bottom line, arts, not just food for the soul, putting food on the table for 2,930 households right here in town. Government revenue, total of $33.2 million. Arts, you know, arts provides a return on that investment. Small investment, big returns. Arts are kindling for the economy. Let me just give you a couple interesting numbers. Every time someone goes out to an arts event, they average $32.69 per person in that event-related spending. And, you know, there's little one-pagers, the numbers are a little small up there, but you go to the COCA website, actually, you'll find a much fuller detail about that. But every time we go to an arts event, we're spending money at local businesses. Not only that, 16% of attendees at arts events in this area come from outside the county. And when we asked them, "Why are you here?", 68% said, "We came specifically for this arts event." What do those non-local attendees spend? $61.16 per person, per event, every time they're going to an arts event. We asked their local counterparts, the folks of you who do live here, "Well, what if this arts event wasn't taking place? Would you stay at home, done something else?" We gave people a lot of options to check. 46% said, "I'd travel elsewhere to attend a similar kind of arts event." So what we're doing when we support the arts, we're improving quality of life and providing cultural benefits, but we're investing in an industry that draws people to the community, those people are spending money, and keeping our neighbors, and they're hard-won discretionary dollars, right here in town. Also, we add some great social impact benefits. You know, the one I love, more than 80% of attendees at arts events say this event is a source of pride for our community. Arts are something that we can all feel good about. Everything you do to support the arts is important. You're important for doing it. Thanks very much for having me.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Real quick, any questions for Mr. Cohen? Nope. Mr. Cohen, thanks again for joining us. I hope you thoroughly enjoy your time in Tallahassee.
I do, and I'll be back.
And please come back soon. Wonderful.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before we go on, just as a follow-up to the proclamation
Sure.
On Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Absolutely.
I wanted to, I didn't know how long the group would be here, the students, and Apostle Young, and Collins, but we are having a prayer service on the plaza in the front of city hall on Sunday, is it at 5:00? At 5:00 PM.
Great.
And so if you want to come and join us, we will be certainly praying for those who have been victims of domestic violence. As Apostle Collins mentioned, growing up, I witnessed my father get physical with my mother. And so it was very easy for me, when she came to me during the time that I was in the legislature, to work with her, to get legislation passed, and to make this an issue that the entire community became aware of. And for the women, or any that the entire community became aware of, and for the women, or even now, men, that are abused, to know that there are people who support them, and that there are services out there for them, if they find themselves in that situation. So join us on Sunday, we'd love to have you come and be a part of that prayer service, and I know Apostle Young is going to be there and be a part of it as well. Thank you.
Wonderful. That is Sunday at 5 o'clock, right here in front of City Hall.
Yes.
Excellent. Do we have any announcements, Mr. Manager, before the city commission?
No, sir.
Do we have any appearances by other governmental entities?
No, sir.
We are on the consent agenda, has any consent agenda item been pulled from the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Colleagues?
Move acceptance of consent.
Mayor Pro Tim has properly moved the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on the introduction of ordinance, Madam Attorney, 11.01.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 23-0-39, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Chapter 20, Article 5, trespass towing of the Code of General Ordinances of the city of Tallahassee, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 23-0-39, set the first and only public hearing for November 8th, 2023, at 6 o'clock PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall. Requested amendments allow for a more thorough process and transparency for companies and civilians whose cars have been towed. Towing companies are also requested an increase in fees that they are allowed to charge for trespass towing.
Okay, the recommended option is option 1, which is simply the introduction of the ordinance. Great, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. 11.02, Madam Attorney.
Item number 11.02 is the introduction of ordinance number 23-0-41, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Chapter 10 of the Tallahassee Land Development Code concerning the allowed location of fraternity and sorority land uses, providing for conflict, severability, and an effective date. Recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 23-0-41, set the first and only public hearing for November 8th, 2023, at 6 o'clock PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall. At the October 11th, 2023, city commission meeting, an ordinance was initiated to amend Chapter 10 of the Land Development Code regarding the allowed location of fraternity and sorority houses. This ordinance would update the zoning districts and geographic areas within the zoning districts where these uses are allowed, revising the allowed locations to be those areas where the majority of the fraternity and sorority houses are known to be currently located.
Excellent, the recommended option is the introduction of the ordinance. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues?
Move for option 1.
Second.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item 11.03, Madam Attorney.
Item number 11.03 is the introduction of ordinance number 23-0-42, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, deleting Section 2-10 and amending Section 2-16 of the Code of General Ordinances concerning financial disclosures, providing for conflict, severability, and an effective date. Recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 23-0-42, and set the first and only public hearing for November 8th, 2023, at 6 o'clock PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall. During the legislative session of 2023, the legislature enacted amendments to the state's ethics code, which now require elected municipal officials to file full and complete financial disclosure, formed with the state commission on ethics. The statutory change has rendered the city's financial form obsolete. Proposed ordinance repeals the city codes, which are now duplicative to the new state requirements.
All right, the recommended option is option number 1, which is simply the introduction of the ordinance into the record. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have one speaker on this item.
Great.
Bernard Stevens. Bernard Stevens is the only speaker we have, I'll use this chance, Mayor, to let speakers know that they have three minutes for remarks. I thought I saw Mr. Stevens, he may have stepped out, but the light in front of the mayor and Mayor Pro Tim will turn green when you begin, and ultimately turn yellow and then red, yellow at 30 seconds remaining in your time. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Stevens? Oh, okay. Thanks for joining us, your name and address for the record, please.
Before you start the clock, what, are we on 11.03?
We are on 11.03, yes, sir.
Okay, so we got a misprint, we were supposed to be on 11.02, not 11.03.
Mayor, we covered 11.01 and 11.02, the form I have for you indicates you wanted to speak on 11.03, which is the item we're on at the present.
Yeah, no, that's, well, that too, but 11.02 was supposed to be included in that, I have it written down. I'm not sure why every time I put my speaker card up, it disappears.
We have one card for 11.
We have one card for 11.03.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and speak on 11.03, the item that we're on, and after we take care of this business, we'd love to hear your comments on 11.02.
My name is Reverend Bernard Stevens, my address is exempt. Ladies and gentlemen, my brothers and my sisters, I have the slightest clue, or pretty much an idea, of why, at the end of the day, that the financial disclosures of individuals that's working for the city, or even sit on the government, just now has to go to the Ethics Committee, number 1. Number 2, I feel as if you all should already know, being leaders, that that's something that you should have implemented a while ago. You look at it in Miami-Dade, you look at it in Tampa, you look at it in St. Pete, Poneles, all of those individuals make their elected officials do so. I'm to the point now where I'm starting to wonder, do we have the right leadership? Do we have the right leaders? Or are we still around here taking photo ops, ignoring the fact that people are still dying on your streets, that people are still sitting around here shooting each other, that people are really facing a mental health crisis, and we continue to talk about we have a solution with money? I'm tired, I am sick and tired of coming to these meetings, expressing myself, the people whom I elected seems as if they're uninterested in my concerns, or my well-being, better yet, the community. So I'm asking, and I'm begging, to try to figure out, why do we constantly keep going in a circle, and nobody seems to hear? It's either you want to be biased, but you sure as hell not impartial. I'm tired, I am sick and tired of being treated as a slave, for 1. I am sick and tired of being ignored, for 1. 22 years you been in this, same thing going on. Sister Cox don't even pay nobody no attention, she just read her computer, she think this is a game. But people in the community is hurting. I'm tired, y'all financial disclosures and everything else, your amendments, this is something that should have been handled in the beginning. I don't understand why you all wait for legislators to do something, when you been serving in legislation for years, and you still doing that, and now you just sitting up here half-sleep half of the meetings. On top of that, you going taking pictures, then you gave a million dollars away, just the other day. How you do that? When you going over there to Holden Street to walk in them projects? When you going to go do that? When y'all going to get your butt up and do some work? I'm tired now, I done told you once before, I'm tired. Now Reese Gold, I done looked up the definition of your last name, and it don't look too good.
30 seconds.
It don't look too good. Now I can read it out loud, but I'mma hold my peace, but I'm telling y'all, I'm telling you right now, you can do whatever you please, but you will not continue to run the city of Tallahassee in shambles. You will not continue to put all this stuff on this piece of paper to confuse the mind as if you do not know what is going on. Now I got two more times to come up here to speak, and when I get to my hundred agenda speakers, I'm gonna let it have it. Thank you for my time.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim?
Because we have young, impressionable minds in our midst who may not understand, I want to clarify that what this is
I was.
Is something that we are doing that other cities are not doing.
Correct.
And the Florida legislature is now requiring other cities to do it, so as a result of that, we no longer have to do this particular form, we're going to use the same form that everyone else will be using, because the Florida legislature has decided that everybody should do this. Everyone was not doing the form that we were doing. We were doing a very explicit form, I mean, we put that upon ourselves to do. And so I want to make sure that the young people who are listening, you understand that we are doing what we were doing, more than what we were required to do, and now all the other cities and commissioners and our places are now having to do this as well, because the Florida legislature has now made it a requirement. So all we're doing now is moving from our own form that we created, right, Treasury Clerk?
Right.
And Madam Attorney, we're now moving to the state form. So all this is, is amending our ordinance, so that we can comply with what everyone else is doing. So I just wanted to clear that up, because the young mind is very impressionable, and you need to understand what's really going on here, so I wanted to take that teachable moment to do that.
There we go. Do we have any other public comment?
Not on this item, no, sir.
Okay, so yeah, let me chime in, and we'll go ahead and move forward with the motion. I agree with Commissioner Williams-Cox, and I'm sorry for any confusion on our part. Actually, the city of Tallahassee was, I believe, the first city out of 411 in 2018 to actually go to full financial disclosure down to the penny. That was part of the reform that came in when many of us were elected, and we were the first, and we've been doing it ever since. But it wasn't state law, so we had our own form that we would fill out and post on the website. You can go back to 2018, when we were all newly elected, and you can go back and look at all of our finances, down to the penny, and we were the only city to do so. So last year, the Florida legislature passed a law making all the cities in the state of Florida do exactly what we were doing. In fact, I do believe they used us as an example of being the city that actually does it. So now you have a state form that we have to comply with. So this agenda item, if I am correct, Madam Attorney, simply replaces the old city of Tallahassee form, which is almost identical to the new state form, and it's just codifying it. So I think you'd be pleased to know that we were actually the first, and have been doing it since 2018. Further comments, Commissioner Richardson?
I just wanted to also, as a civic lesson for the young people that are here, state law preempts local law. So if the legislature passes a law, we have to comply as a local government, so that's how that works. So again, a very teachable moment for the young people that are here.
Right. So I think we're all clear on the item that's before us, is there a motion for approval?
So?
Second.
Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor, this is item 11.03, all those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. I will allow the gentleman to go back and speak on 11.2, even though it's passed, he was interested in speaking on it. So if you'll please come join us once again, three minutes, and your name and address for the record, please.
Reverend Bernard, Michael Stevens Jr., my address is exempt. I looked at my wrist, and I got time today. That's one thing. But 2, this little red line deal, it got to stop. Your fraternities, your universities, they are the ones who plant the seed in this city. Do you not know, without Florida A&amp;M University, do you not know, without Florida State, we'll just be like Wall Collin County, Gaston County, Liberty County, all the surrounding counties? But yet, the ones who come, and the enrollment continues to go up, you want to continue to have this red line deal? Because one or two people come in here to complain, and you act immensely, but you forget about the rest of it. Now, I'm just confused, at the end of the day, why is it that every single time, one or two individuals come in here, and they complain about something that's going on where they stay, you don't tell them to get up and move? These students accommodate the city, they put money in businesses, they do all of that. You know what a sorority does, or a fraternity does? It helps build a growth and foster the individual and their mind. And these notions where y'all think, just because you got power, and your opinion, it matters, you was elected. You should have had power before you got up here to talk. Don't think because you in the commissioner's seat, that you got all the power and all the sense in the world, because you don't. We are humans, we are teachable. I don't understand why y'all think you got an answer for everything. And then for Sister Cox, to sit around here knowing what the black man facing struggles, every single time I come up here, her hand is on her head. But you sit here in the beginning of your meeting, and you talk about people. How you do that? Domestic violence, all of the battery? What about the mental health of an individual and a person's mind of how you leave them out, or how you ignore them, and their concerns, and their questions? How do you do that? I can't do it anymore, I'm not going to do it anymore. You need to give these fraternities and these organizations better opportunity to figure something out, instead of telling them, oh, you can't do this, and you can't do that. Every time I tell y'all what y'all can and can't do, you seem to do the opposite. You seem to do the opposite. Your fraternities, huh? Red line deal, same thing that they doing with voting. And you got the audacity to sit up here and talk about, yeah, you know, this is a civic lesson, and this is what happens? You don't think they educated enough to know that? You challenge my authority, and you challenge my intellect, as if I am somebody who is not smart. I ain't dealing with that no more. I voted for both of y'all, and the simple fact that y'all sit up here and contradict my speech, instead of support me like you support those proclamations?
You're at 30 seconds.
And everything else? Thank you, I see the time. Listen, man, y'all got an opportunity to come to the table. I met with you at Bill Proctor thing, and you told me to set up a meeting with you. You ain't answered my request yet. She smiled all in my face, come talk to me. He look at me, oh, I'm not going to let you beat me. Listen, man, this government need to be fixed, and it need to be fixed now. Leave them students alone, because they put money in the city, and without them, we can't do nothing.
Thank you. That was comments on 11.02 for the record, and that item passed 5-0 unanimously. We are on item Policy Formation Direction, 12.01. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 1201 is an update, a Midtown Progress update. As you'll recall, you created a Midtown Stakeholders Committee in March of 2021, that committee was made up of residents and business representatives. I'd like to recognize Laurel Harbin, the senior planner, she's going to provide a presentation, as well as Devin Levin, they participated in the process, and so we have a short presentation as a matter of an update, and ask that you accept the report.
All right, so the recommended option, as they're setting up for the presentation, is simply to accept the update, and it's before us today. Thank you all so much for your hard work.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here to provide an update on the list of priorities that the Midtown Stakeholders Committee has been working on over the past few years, as well as provide an overview of some of the ongoing projects that the city of Tallahassee has in the area, and the financial investment that that's made. So here's the area that we're looking at, it's a combination of commercial zoning, as well as residential preservation neighborhoods. The Midtown Stakeholders Group, as you know, is a combination of these stakeholder interests, it's four members from the business and commercial property owner community, and four members from the surrounding neighborhoods. The committee was formed by the commission in 2021 as a time-limited committee to come up with a list of priorities for the Midtown area. The committee started with a vision statement to guide the priorities, and they vetted this through invited stakeholders from the neighborhoods and from the surrounding businesses. The vision you'll see is relatively consistent with the multimodal priorities that we have in our comprehensive plan and in our MMTD zoning district, which has a set of development standards about building orientation and urban form. The priorities are divided into two categories, the short-term priorities are those that they see most pressing, and the long-term are those that address the issues of land use, transportation, and infrastructure, and urban design, so those things that get planned out over time and then implemented. And I do want to note that some of these projects are in alignment with existing city, county, and blueprint projects that are funded and moving forward, one of which is the current planning project, Vision 2055, to look at our land use and mobility element update, that is a consultant project that we're leading, it's active now, and we invited the committee to participate in that. So while this was going on, staff took a look at the ongoing projects to see how they aligned with what the priorities were. We know that there have been $2.8 million of projects that have been implemented since the adoption of the Midtown Action Plan in 2011. Those are ones that you see scattered throughout the district, that I'll show in a moment. And we also have five recently, five active and one recently completed project that reflect an investment of $17.9 million, so the investment to date's over $20 million. An additional funding for a blueprint Midtown projects, $2 million in fiscal year '25, additional $22 million to expand that project beyond its current boundaries coming in fiscal year '36. So we have a total public investment nearing $45 million. So some of the things you've seen in the area, they're spread around the district, and you see that in the map here, combined together Combined together, they create the character that adds to what the Midtown District is. These are some of the projects that came out of both our Midtown Action Plan as well as the CRTPA Midtown Area Transportation Plan from 2020. This includes enhanced crosswalks on the DOT roadways like Thomasville Road and North Monroe. It also includes the wayfinding signage program. Other enhancements include sidewalks. These have been added to the surrounding neighborhoods as well as the commercial areas. This includes a project currently in the design phase, the Sixth Avenue sidewalk construction that'll connect the commercial area westward through Levy Park. So these are the ones that you're probably already familiar with. Things that we have looking forward to are the Blueprint Midtown Placemaking Project. This is guided by the Action Plan as well as the 2020 CRTPA Plan. It's $5 million with the additional $2 million added at this past budget update in September. What we see here is an implementation of those pedestrian safety improvements, sidewalk widening, lighting. It also includes a partial undergrounding of utilities. You can see how this is in alignment with what the committee wants to see happen here. In addition, this segment that's on Thomasville Road between North Monroe and Seventh Avenue will be expanded in future phases of the project with a $22 million investment from blueprint funds. That's something to look forward and opportunities to align these priorities with on the ground physical projects moving forward. Another one that you can't see yet, it's in the design phase, is the Phase One of the Lake Jackson Greenway. This connects Lake Ella up to John Nux Road. So this provides a recreational amenity as well as an alternative transportation mode to the area. So looking at the projects, we look for alignment with the priorities. You can see here how they align with transportation infrastructure, underground utilities, urban design elements, as well as the comp plan that we see in those long term priorities. So what we're seeing is that the greatest success of Midtown and the existing plans that we have, the Midtown Action Plan, the CRTPA Midtown Area Transportation Plan, as well as the development standards in our MMTD District, is that on the ground projects, physical projects we're funding has been allocated, has been the greatest success. So that's what we're prioritizing now, and we recommend that you accept the update that includes the projects as well as the priorities from the committee.
Excellent. Thank you. Before we get into any public comment, any questions, clarification?
Well, I did have a question, but I wanted to wait until the Mayor Pro Tem comes back because I know she's heading up the West Pensacola Street Initiative, and just wanted to get an idea of, is this where we're headed with that initiative as well? A plan that's like what we've seen here for Midtown?
All right. I tell you what, let's get through this agenda item and then we'll, we can tackle that later. Do we have any public comment on this?
Mayor, we do have several speakers on this, on this item.
Excellent. Okay.
The first is Chris Robinson. Chris Robinson to be followed by Jake Varne.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Chris Robinson, 1505 Colonial Drive. Been a member of the Midtown Stakeholders Committee, and I previously served on the Midtown Working Group when it was formed around 2010. This may be the last time I have the pleasure of being on this committee. Your recommendation includes sunsetting us, holding no further meetings. And I just wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity to represent this neighborhood for the last 13 years, to represent Midtown and to make an impact on the city at large. Unfortunately, our committee was not provided a reasonable notice of this presentation. This agenda item represents our implied support. However, we were not given an option to respond as individuals or to review this as a committee. Unfortunately, we were actually notified by staff this Saturday afternoon, the weekend before the meeting. I hope we can all support the idea that volunteer members of the committee deserve the chance to review and respond to an agenda item prior to it being published and suspect that everyone here would take some issue with their name being placed on a document that they were not given the chance to review, respond, and potentially improve and strengthen. I would welcome the chance to discuss the topic of this agenda item with my committee and certainly with each of you if you would like that option. The agenda item before you provides only one option. My request that the Commission consider an alternative idea that provides the stakeholder committee the chance to discuss the recommendations and in particular, the idea of sunsetting us. On behalf of all of our stakeholders in this committee, please consider providing a means for this effort to continue with a clear and obtainable objective. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to continue to be part of making our city a better place, to not just park, but to live, work, study, and play.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Jake Varne, followed by Dot Inman Johnson.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jake Varne. I live at 1501 Fernando Drive, 32303. I am the chairman of the Midtown Working Group after it was appointed. I might point out that as I joined this group, that is my understanding that efforts have been ongoing between the neighborhoods and the business community in Midtown since 2010, 2011. This committee was appointed in March of last year, or excuse me, 2021. We had our first meeting in April of 2021. We produced the report that you have attached as Exhibit Number, Exhibit One, Attachment One. That attachment, what we did, was done by a unanimous vote of the four representatives of the neighborhoods and the four members of the business community. We did not see, the committee has not had the opportunity to review this staff report. It only became available a week ago. When this item was first presented to you a month ago and it was pulled from the agenda for unknown reasons, now you've got this staff report that's even suggesting that the committee be done away with. And we haven't even had a chance to meet to discuss it. We can't talk among ourselves. I agree with what Chris said. I just, I don't quite understand how this was done. I would make the following recommendations. When we originally started, the focus was on getting a master plan for Midtown. We have been told rather consistently that money is simply not there to do a master plan for Midtown. If that is in fact the case, if you look at our attachment number one, you'll see that the number one priority in Midtown is to deal with parking. And I suggest to you that that is something that can be done immediately and should be our focus point because it's something that needs to be done. We want the business community to be successful, but we also don't want them to be interfering with our neighborhood activities. We should be able to coexist. And the very fact that this group did this, these recommendations to you unanimously, when after 10 years of talking, they got nothing done, should help this commission decide on what needs to be done. So among the recommendations, I find it hard to believe it suggested they do away with the committee. I mean, what's going on? I don't really understand it. We never had the opportunity to comment on it. We would not support the suggestion. I think we all were very happy with the fact that we came with a unanimous recommendation. We gave this, we did this in May of 2022. May of 2022. Now we're 18 months later and we're finally getting something. We're seeing the report for the first time. I mean, what in the world's going on? Maybe you don't have any interest in Midtown.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't.
That's okay. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Dot Inman Johnson, followed by Randy Dinker.
Your name and address for the record, please.
I know the drill. Dot Inman Johnson, 2121 Trescott Drive, Tallahassee. I'm speaking on this item because in the past, it has been a tradition for staff to work very closely with the committee. And Mr. Mayor, you appointed this stakeholder committee, so you must have seen some value in their contribution to what would happen in Midtown. And I was interested in the fact that the committee, the four representatives for the businesses in Midtown and the four representatives for the neighborhoods, all came to a unanimous conclusion on what their recommendations should be. But what the problem is, is that the committee was never engaged by staff before bringing forward this recommend, well, not recommendation, but report to you. And it would be much better if staff worked directly with the committee, went over how their recommendations fit into what would be reported here, or the chair was sitting with them in agreement on what was happening. There are excellent infrastructure projects that are scattered throughout the city budget, but there is no one from the public to really oversee all of that to its conclusion. And I think the committee is scheduled to sunset next year. That committee would very much like to have the term extended so that they play a role in overseeing the progress of what happens in Midtown and that their recommendations are given serious attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Randy Dinker. Mayor, that's the last speaker I have on this item at this time.
Great. Name and address for the record, please.
Randy Dinker, 552 East Georgia Street. About seven years ago, you probably all remember, we had the big controversy with the parking garage in Midtown, and over 100 people showed up and they said this was not a good deal for the city and this was not the kind of development they wanted to see in Midtown. And then shortly after that, and I'm going to address you, Mr. Mayor, you very graciously and generously gave your time to meet with myself and with members of the Lafayette Park Neighborhood Association. We sat around the table at my house and we, we kind of batted ideas around. And I remember you said, let's think big in Midtown. And you talked about some of your ideas about making some streets pedestrian and having creative people movers. And we got really excited. I mean, you were my hero that night. And then afterwards, you know, it seemed like things didn't really get started. So the neighbors came back and said, we want a master plan. And I remember distinctly the night we met at City Commission, and again, Mr. Mayor, you rescued things. You were my hero again. You said, I'm gonna put a motion on the table that we endorse and commit to a master plan and that we create this stakeholders committee that will be a formal city committee, and we'll give them the task of coming up with recommendations for what would be included in the master plan. And again, we were all thrilled. And then Jake Varne became the chairman, and he did an incredible job pulling together all the disparate interests, the stakeholders, and they came up with unanimous recommendations. And we thought, well, okay, we got unanimous agreement now, business community, neighborhood, we're all on board. We thought something was gonna happen right away. And that report sat there for 18 months, as Mr. Varne just told you. And we don't understand that. We're still really excited about the vision you talked about seven years ago, and we still want the master plan that you all voted unanimously to approve that night. So I would say this agenda item is not recommending anything, that you can vote on it, but it's a book report. It doesn't ask you to do anything. I would ask you once again to be my hero, Mr. Mayor, and put a motion on the table to reconfirm your commitment to a master plan, and don't sunset the committee because they have a job still to do in working in tandem with the master planners and supervising, and as needed, maybe making other recommendations. So we need that. And right now, what's going on in Midtown is a lot of piecemeal development. You got the city doing one project, Blueprint's doing something else, County's doing something else, DOT permitting is happening.
You have about 15 seconds.
Okay. Historic buildings are being raised. We need a master plan to pull all the loose threads together and give us one cohesive vision. So that's what I'm asking you, be my hero again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
No additional speakers on 1201.
All right. Dr. Harbin. Talk to us about how we got to where we are. And you heard the concerns from members of the working group. Are their recommendations not included? Have they had time to review? How did we get to where we are?
The Middies recommendations, are there priorities that are attachment one? The sunsetting of the committee was voted upon by this commission at the 2021 meeting, March 24, 2021. That is scheduled for next March. That's not a part of this recommendation. Mr. Varne and the committee is correct, parking is an issue. It was identified in the 2021 Action Plan. That has not changed. Other actions have taken place. Staff has done a parking study that was presented in 2016 to the commission. It resulted in parking alternatives that were not approved. They didn't, were not appreciated by the community. So we looked at alternatives. Staff used placemaking funds to identify 61 on-street parking spaces and had them added to the parking supply. Staff updated the parking study in 2019 and presented that to the commission. Any questions that you have, I'd be happy to answer.
Are all of their recommendations included in attachment one?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Mr. Manager, comments? Thanks, Dr. Harbin. Appreciate it.
Actually, if Laurel, you can say. I think, Mr. Mayor, I think in the presentation, and it may make more sense now that you've heard the comments, during the process, there was an effort to identify those things that could be accomplished. I think we know, and obviously Laurel and Devin and others are very capable planners, I think we know generally that parking is the central issue or a central issue in the, you know, the development of Midtown or the character of Midtown. And we know that there was, there was some discussion by the City Commission to consider the construction of a garage. That's not moving forward. And so that's, that's a big piece of it. And so that's obviously, we're not recommending anything related to that. But, but I think what Laurel tried to present, and maybe it makes sense, is how we collected all the things that are happening or wouldn't have otherwise been happening because of the discussion of the committee and present those. You saw some cross-sections of Thomasville Road. And so, so there is a lot of progress that comes from it. What it doesn't do is move forward to the master plan that in all likelihood would tell you those same things and probably steer you towards another parking solution. So maybe that gives a little context, but I think that was the attempt to show the progress that happened.
Is this time sensitive?
No, sir.
So if we did postpone, you know, next meeting or a future meeting, do allow the working group to have the opportunity to review their unanimous recommendations that are attached in attachment one, and then bring it back for discussion and approval? Is that gonna be, is that gonna, is that gonna ruin the plan and where we're going?
I don't think it'd ruin anything.
All right. Let's look. It, it sounds like all the recommendations are in there unanimously, but if the committee would like to get back together to one more time, review it, I certainly don't have a plan, I mean, I have a problem with it. You heard that it's not time sensitive. What is the will of the Board? Commissioner Richardson, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Matlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would, I would move that we give, we bring this back when it comes back. Now, tonight is just to accept the update.
Right.
Not to vote on the recommendations.
Right.
Just to accept the update. So I would think, given what we've heard this afternoon, that we do give the working group an opportunity to review the report, if they have any additional comments, to make those comments. And also, Mr. Mayor, that we make sure that all of the pieces that Ms. Dinker talked about, that they are city, county, blueprint, if those projects are being done in Midtown, that, that it is coordinated and everybody knows that they are made aware of what the projects are and how each of those entities are working together and communicating with moving those projects forward. So that would be my motion, that we accept the update, but give the work group an opportunity to review the report and also to make sure that those entities that are working on projects in the Midtown area are coordinating their efforts and timelines.
I would second that motion.
Okay. There's a motion on the table by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Pro Tem for comments?
Commissioner Richardson said what I was thinking, based on what Ms. Dinker said about the different projects that are going on. I know that they're being coordinated, and I know that you guys are on top of that, but it sounds like that there's a need for the working group and residents to know who's on first, what's going on, what are the timelines and things like that. So I think giving them extra time to be able to put that together and come together with it and share what you, what you know and where with it and, and share what you, what you know and where things are, I think will give a level of comfort to the working group and the residents that things are happening. They may not be happening, da, 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 da. It may be happening like this, but they are happening, and we can show you, we can point, point to where these things are happening and that your concerns and your recommendations have been heard. Or if we miss something, then let's, let's explore it and see what we need to do to, to bring it in, to bring it in. So I, I understand the concern. I, I do.
Mr. Mayor?
On point. No, on point. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. The one thing that I didn't include in the motion, and I did intend to, is that we not sunset the work group. I, I think it is important for them to continue to oversee and monitor the progress that's being made towards implementing this action plan.
Well, I would ask that you just have the item come back for discussion.
Okay.
I, I, you know, I'm, I'm leaning that way anyway, but I want to go back and refresh my memory.
Okay.
Of when that came before us. But yeah.
Yeah.
That could be, that could be an item of discussion when this comes back.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Good point. Commissioner Matliff and Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I first want to thank all the members of the working group. I think when we first created this, it was, it was a bit of a, a challenge throwing competing interests together from the neighborhoods to the business interests, but also trying to make something that's cohesive, that everybody could agree with, was a great destination, both to go-to for entertainment, but also to, to live. And I know that was a, a challenging process that everybody went through. So thank you to everyone who came tonight, but also the members who weren't able to attend this evening. I, I, I too was a bit confused. The priorities specifically speak to master plan priorities, but we're not discussing actually creating a master plan. So I think that caused some confusion about how these would be implemented, how every single individual priority would be implemented. And I think we need, as, as a, as an elected body, but also with feedback from, from the working group, is do we need to move forward with the master planning process to implement these, or do, or do we implement them some other way? So I think that should be a part of the conversation when it comes back and as well as to get feedback from the public. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have a couple of questions. Is there, was anything, Mr. Manager, was there a reason it was removed from the agenda?
Dr. Harvard?
Mr. Mayor, actually Laurel made, I, I think it might have just been an agenda balancing issue. I don't, I don't believe there was any issue with this item itself.
No issues with it.
Okay. Thanks, Laurel.
Okay. And, I mean, had we approved this today, what would have been the next steps?
Next steps would be identifying opportunities to use those priorities to guide future projects, such as the Midtown Placemaking Project as it moves into the future phases, and other funding sources like sidewalks and infrastructure that the city and county both have.
Okay. And what? This may not be an easy question to answer, but I mean, roughly, when we're talking about a master plan with, with what we have already and what discussions we're having between other organizations and stakeholders, I mean, how much does a master plan like this usually cost, like a ballpark figure?
Ballpark pre-COVID, I'd say $250, but I'd have to compare plans and bring something back to give you that estimate.
Okay. So I guess I'm wondering, I mean, based on these recommendations, like how specific are they? I mean, I'm wondering how we would even specifically be incorporating these into...
If I may?
Yeah, please.
That's something we could bring back in the update item to give you some ideas of how we see these translating to projects.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I, I think that I would definitely like to see that. And I agree, I think this needs to come back to us. I would ask if we could that, if it's, if, if the committee thinks there's enough time, you know, that this come back to our December meeting, that would, we have, you know, or our November, I think November might be too soon. I think that's the eighth. But, you know, I don't want to wait any longer for this to come back to us. So if we could, you know, if that works for the committee, I would like to see this be, come back, back to us this year. I'm also just wondering, I mean, I really, this is just sort of a bigger comment. This is something that we hear or I hear a lot from different community members. I know how difficult it can be to reconcile different stakeholder interests and opinions and views and priorities. But, you know, it's concerning to me when I hear that the group who's put in so many hours of time, you know, that it's kind of like a waste of everyone's time if they weren't really consulted before getting to this place. So I think this is an opportunity for us to, to do things a little bit differently. You know, I think that when we're talking about people who've served for so long, and then they come here to this meeting, obviously, they wouldn't take the more time out of their lives to come here if they didn't feel strongly about it. And it seems like we could have circumvented that, you know, had we been a little bit more thoughtful about it. And so it's, you know, it's important to me, and I think it's important to everyone, that we're including people, notifying them as much as possible, because I don't like to hear that, you know, something's been put out without the people involved in creating it, you know, knowing about it and having a chance to be involved. Because that's the whole point, you know, of, of having the committee. If, if it's going to come to us without, you know, they're A-OK as much as possible, then I just don't think that's, that doesn't help us move forward. So, but I'm glad that we reached this point, even if it's taken a while, and hopefully we'll, when it comes back to us, we'll have a little bit more information and consensus. Thank you.
Well, my opinion, Dr. Harvard, I appreciate everything that you and staff have done. I mean, we've been working really hard. It sounds like 100% of all unanimous recommendations are included. Now, the committee wants to take one more formal look at it before it comes before us, and, and, and we're fine with that. But I think you've been working really hard with the stakeholders, and I really appreciate it. And I think it's going to be a fantastic document. I do have one charge, and I'm looking at Mr. Varn on this, something that, that I've been thinking about for a while. And I'd love for the committee to kind of kick it around, and, and it doesn't have to be big at all. But you know, we like to honor our leaders in this community that, that have done specific things. And I, you're probably familiar, Jake, with the fact that former Commissioner Jim Cruz played a very significant role back at the, okay, right there next to your neighborhood? You know the, the line of oaks that were planted that creates the canopy? He was the champion for that. I think it's like five trees right there. You've got the rose garden, and then you've got the, the median that sticks out. I think it would be great to have a little plaque or something that just recognizes his efforts. I don't know what that looks like. I'm not saying it has to be big as an entrance coming in, but I think there should be some type of acknowledgement for Jim's work and dedication as, as a former commissioner for that. Will you take that back to the committee, too? See if you can come up with something that, it's, it's very minor in the grand scheme of things, but if we're going to take another look, I'd love to have the neighborhoods and the businesses think about that, too. I think it would be pretty cool. Okay. So why don't we go ahead and we'll just table action on this? I think the understanding is, is that it's going to come back. Jake, do you think that, excuse me, excuse me, Secretary Varn, do you think that, former Secretary Varn, do you think that y'all would have the opportunity, say, within the next month at least, to get together and be able to look at it and? Go ahead.
... on the first Monday of each month, so we could, we, we have time, we can set a meeting for November.
That'd be great.
And then try to get something back so y'all could take action in December. But I, I, I think that's very doable, and it's, at this time of the year, members, the holiday season.
Understood.
And getting everybody together may be more difficult than I thought, but we can certainly give it a try and report back to you. Because I agree, it's something that needs to be done. And incidentally, Laurel and Devin have been super.
Wonderful, yeah.
In terms of their support and what they've done.
That's great.
And I attribute if there came a problem, it occurred somewhere above them on the way here, but, but that's bypass, we're, we're past that now.
We're good.
So we can get it fixed, and we'll move forward and see how we can get something done for you.
Sounds good. So the ball's in your court, the call of the committee to gather.
Mr. Mayor?
For the formal presentation, and...
Mayor, I was going to comment to you. I know that for me...
I'm coming to your motion, absolutely.
Okay.
... years, you've agonized by the fact that your father could never beat me in flag football.
You know, that's not what I heard growing up. I heard that you never beat him in flag football as a coach.
Well, you were the player, and we had an unblemished record, and I'll be glad to share my secrets with you one day. So thank you very much.
Good to see you. And by the way, thank you for your service as the former secretary to Department of Environmental Protection of the state of Florida. We certainly appreciate that. We are back on the Commissioner's good motion that was seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem.
And one, one thing I'd like to add, Mr. Chairman, that we not put a time limit on it because of...
Sure.
Some of the issues that Mr. Varn talked about. If they're comfortable with it coming before the end of the year or early part of next year, based on those kinds of logistics, I, I would be comfortable with that.
Okay. Sounds great. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, it was only because they've asked for it to come back. It was just, you know, it wasn't to rush them in any way. Thank you.
Commissioner Matliff?
Yeah, I was going to chime in there, too. I, I just don't want to wait 16 months before we see it again. So sometime reasonable, give them the time to do the work and, and get it back to us. Thank you.
As I said, the ball is in their court.
Of course.
To get together and review it and as much time as they need, but when they're ready to send it back, it'll come back before us. All those in favor of motion on table, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 12.02.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item requests authorization to submit an application for funding through the Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods Grant Program. This is a federal grant program, and it's intended to reconnect communities by removing or mitigating eligible barriers to multimodal access, such as bridges, highways, or railroads. If awarded, the city will use this funding to support a planning project identified as connecting Tallahassee multimodal transportation across tracks. The project will look specifically to identify and address access barriers related to railroad crossings at Eisenhower Street and Mayberry Street. If awarded, it would be approximately $1.3 million of grant funding used toward the project. We also wanted to take the opportunity, this is one of many projects that you hopefully will approve and, and have approved and acted upon, dealing with pedestrian access, access to neighborhoods, connecting schools via sidewalk programs. And so we wanted to, to include this as, in a broader context. And so we have a short presentation, and then we ask for your support of this item. Steve Schaefer is our General Manager of Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure. He's going to give us the overview, and I'd like to recognize Eric Gooch, who, who's a senior member on his team and in charge of this project, as well as many others. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm, I'm really excited to have the opportunity to present this item to you today. And as Reese mentioned, I, I would like to take a second to just kind of provide a broader context for, for, for this issue and what we're doing here today. So as, as you know, you have made a, a priority of providing safe and efficient transportation options for citizens, and it's, it's evident by several of the initiatives and goals that you've included in the strategic plan that you've adopted. For instance, becoming a gold standard biking community, an increased percentage of residents using alternative modes of transportation, continuing implementation of the Greenways Master Plan, and, and of course, the, the direction to provide a number of sidewalk projects, 10 sidewalks per year. Staff has done actually a remarkable job in this so far in providing progress. And for instance, the, the issues associated with the bicycles are implemented in a multi-pronged, multi-agency way. We coordinate with several other departments and agencies, including PLACE, CRTPA, CRA, Blueprint, and in implementing these types of projects. And one major way that we do that is through our master plans. The BikePad Master Plan and the Greenways Master Plans provide not only an opportunity for implementation of capital projects, but they provide a framework for other products that we do, other capital products, to incorporate some of the improvements that they, they recommend or, or at least provide opportunities for. In addition to the might, the multi, I'm sorry, master planning and the capital project development, we are constantly looking for safety and operational improvements to address and, and improve and enhance safety for multimodes of transportation. You've seen some of the results of that out on the streets. Bike boxes are the green boxes that are put ahead of the stop bars to give bicycles a chance to get in front of traffic and provide more visibility for them as they're going through intersections. Protected bike lanes, you've seen those on, to the university, from downtown to the university. We're actually working with Blueprint right now to enhance the ones that we have and expand that. We also have operational improvements that we can do through signalization, such as, the one that's shown up here is what we call leading pedestrian interval, where we include a all-red cycle for vehicles to give the pedestrians a chance to get out in front. So we give them the heads up and get them out in the intersection to provide visibility for them, to make that safer for them to cross through these intersections. The progress that we've made on the sidewalks has been, I think, remarkable as well, and I want to share the kudos that, and, and recognition that Reese mentioned to Eric Gooch and his team. They've done a remarkable job on, on achieving the goals that you set in the master plan for, or the strategic plan for the number of sidewalks we built. During this master plan, we've implemented over 45 projects now. And this can't be done without, or couldn't be done without also the great work they're doing in leveraging of funding. During this time, we've received and have been awarded about $9 million so far to supplement the fund, the local funding we have for sidewalks. And this is some hot-off-the-press news that we just found out this week. The state awarded us $2.9 million in a TA grant to support the construction of the Paul Russell Road sidewalk project. So we're very excited to be able to report that today.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, a quick question. Is that, is that the portion of Paul Russell, near the fairgrounds, or the portion of Paul Russell?
It, it's from Monday to the parkway.
Oh, okay.
Excellent.
Yep. So this particular grant opportunity is to provide for mitigation of access that is impacted by transportation barriers. In this case, and those types of barriers would be railroads, bridges, highways, and these are the things that can kind of cause problems sometimes for multimodal access. It, it focuses on safety, it focuses on mobility options for all of our users, and aligns really nicely with the initiatives and goals you've set up in the strategic plan. So as we do with, with any grant opportunity, we look at the criteria that they use to force selection, and we want to make sure that the, the projects or the concepts that we propose align with those. In this particular case, we've identified the railroad as a barrier that would fit nicely into the, the criteria that they use to select from. We know that we have a couple of railroad crossings, one at Mayberry, one at Eisenhower, that need improvements. But we're also looking at all the other sidewalk connectivity issues on either side of that railroad. And we've identified, you can see up here, a list of eight or nine different sidewalk projects we've already identified needs for, that we're going to incorporate into the planning of this particular grant. So the benefit of this particular grant, obviously, it's a huge opportunity for leveraging funding. And as I mentioned, that's really important, and that's, you know, while we have Eric and his team that are implementers of all these projects, they are also the ones that are turning over every rock to find additional funding to help support these. And they've done an amazing job on that, and this is another opportunity for that. But in this particular case, the, the improvements will provide opportunities for better access, multimodal access between all the destinations adjacent to, to the railroad. And you can see the schools and shops and transit, et cetera, that are showing up on this map. This is what's going to help us get to that kind of connectivity to improve the ability for those folks in that area to make these trips without having to necessarily get into their cars. So that's where we are. Once again, this is a planning grant, and we're, we're asking for $1.28 million. If awarded, this is likely to position us very well for future implementation grants. And that is really where... and that is really where we get the funding that we can support the construction of these things as well. The tentative award announcement is next spring, and we're coming to you today with a request that you approve the, authorize us to submit an application. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Matlow, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, first of all, want to commend you all for the kind of visionary thinking that it took to envision what we could do in that area with these funds. One question that I have, and I don't recall the exact boundaries of the South Side Action Plan, but is this area within that?
It is.
I'm seeing Devon nodding. Okay, so, we are addressing then the goals that we have for the South Side Action Plan.
One of the criteria for this particular grant is that it addresses issues in underserved areas, and so, this will be something that we'll be highlighting in our application.
Okay, and that is exactly true of that Sable Palm neighborhood. They are in need of many of the improvements that you're talking about, and I'm glad to see that this is a part of what we're trying to accomplish in that South Side Action Plan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I wanted to just share that Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Matlow and myself were at the White House last week, and U.S. Secretary of Transportation, Pete Pulichek, I may have said that wrong, but anyway, he was there talking about the available resources money-wise going into communities, and we were all Florida delegation. So, I'm happy to see that we're looking to tap into that, and I want to give a shout-out to you guys as well for your vision in doing this. But I also want to give a shout-out to our grants department, because they're, you know, they're the ones, I believe, that are pushing the buttons and what have you based on the information that you all are providing. And one of the things that, I was in DC, not just for the White House visit, but I was there for the Federal Action Strike Team, and we were advocating, we were talking to our other congressmen from Florida, to talk to them about how hard it is to find all of the places to apply for grants, because there, I understand, there are 91 different places that you have to go to find federal grants. And so, one of the things that we were asking congressmen to do is to advocate or to sponsor some legislation that would put these grants in a central location so that it would make it easier to find them. But apparently, our team has found them in all those 91 different places, because we seem to be not only finding them, we're applying for them, and we're very fortunate to be able to accept some of those. And some of the small cities, I met a young lady from, a commissioner from Century Florida, you ever heard of it? Century Florida's near Pensacola, I'm told. And of course, their population is 1,800, so they don't have a staff like ours that could help them find these grants. So, we are very fortunate to have folks who can help us do that, and I wanted to just give a hat, you know, kudos to those individuals and all of you who feed the information that's necessary to complete one of these grants. And so, just wanted to say that, and want to do a little name dropping, that we were in the room with the Secretary of Transportation last week, and they say they got money, so let's go get it.
Is that a motion for option one?
That is.
Staff recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Been a motion for staff recommendation made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. I've got Commissioner Matlow, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do believe that's exactly what they said, we got money, come and get it.
That's right.
But it was a great opportunity. This is actually one of the grants that they highlighted, and I remember they were speaking on the competitive nature of it. And I know in Tallahassee, when we talk about economic segregation in Tallahassee, we don't have to go much further than the railroad tracks, the traditional segregation there. So, I do think what's been identified in this project, you know, hits the nail on the head for the types of projects they're looking for. And another thing that was mentioned is, a project doesn't necessarily, I know this is sort of planning, a project doesn't necessarily have to be shovel-ready. They're really looking for projects that are going to make a real impact, and I think this checks that box too. So, good job on this submission, and I hope we get it.
Excellent. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I echo what everyone has said. I'm just curious, were there any other corridors or locations that we considered?
We really focused on this corridor. First of all, the railroad is the natural corridor that really aligns with this particular opportunity, and we happen to have a lot of already pre-identified sidewalk needs in the area, so it's an opportunity to kind of lump a lot of the needs that we had already identified. What we have mentioned is not a complete listing of everything we may do. We're going to, as we go through the planning process, we'll engage with the community and get their thoughts and their concerns and their suggestions on other potential impacts. So, this could expand a little bit, but generally, this is really where we get the most juice out of this week.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. All those in favor of the motion on the table that was made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item 12.03. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks authorization to continue the technology and innovation over TNI Annual Maintenance Agreement contracts. Specifically, we're seeking the approval to renew, renewal of existing technology information, maintenance, and lease agreements for fiscal year '24 in the amount of $1.496 million. Tim Davis, our Director of TNI, is here if you have any questions.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right.
Move for staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Scene nine, all those in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Do we have any other business come before us under policy formation direction?
No, sir.
We're making great time. This is awesome. So, why don't we go ahead and handle unagenda speakers, then we can do City Commission sharing of ideas before we take a break and come back for the public hearing. Before we begin unagenda speakers, once again, I want to invite everyone to please join me and my colleagues in setting the appropriate tone, not only for everyone in chambers, but also watching on TV. Let's show the world how we can conduct the business of the City of Tallahassee in a civil manner. With that, let's begin public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Stanley Sims. Stanley Sims will be followed by Bernard Stevens.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record. Mr. Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
Eight or so.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, Mr. Sims?
I was supposed to have media assistance.
Mr. Mayor, I believe there's a camera to the right of the podium there where he's sitting his iPad or device, but that would be the media available.
Okay, and then how do we turn the camera on, Mr. Sims? Now, I was asking our staff, how do we turn that camera on for you? It's not working. Okay, I tell you what, Mr. Sims, could we come back to you while we straighten this out real quick? I don't know what else to say at this time. Can somebody from TNI work with Mr. Sims to see if there's possibility to get whatever he wants displayed?
They're working.
Other work on the camera? Okay, sounds great.
Then we'll go to Mr. Stevens. Bernard Stevens is next.
Thanks for joining us. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, my brothers and sisters. My name is Reverend Bernard Michael Stevens, Jr., and my address is exempt. Ladies and gentlemen, I bring before you a report that I got May 15, 2023, from the Officer of the Inspector General, finding no fault in your Tallahassee Police Department in their wrongdoing based off of the policy formations that you have on black and white. You're not being true to what you said on paper. Also, this right here, Tallahassee Police Department Public Records Request. Do you know that the information that you're requiring when it doesn't commit a crime, doesn't involve redacting? And then at the bottom of it, we sit here and we state a case that has nothing to do with the redactions that were checked. So, you know what that tells me? That goes to show me that we just have a whole lot of malfeasance going on. When I went to the records department and I asked them, I say, so who signs off on this, and where are the notes of the reason why they check these statutes? You need to talk to legal. You know, I've been waiting to talk to legal for almost a week and a half and still ain't got an answer. So, I'm gonna warn you, and I'm gonna tell you all straight up, you have 48 hours to get back with me and give me a response, or we will be going to court. And I promise you, I'm not going by myself, but I'm telling you now, you don't holler about malfeasance when your police department clearly is evident. If you can put redactions and stuff when there's no victim and no crime, that's a violation of the Florida statutes. You familiar with that, Mr. Gold, right? No? Yes? Maybe so? It's your city, you run it, you're the highest-paid man in the building, right? Right. So, you know what that just goes to show me, man? You people are paying folks who're supposed to be looking out for our community, and in actuality, they're not. These are puppets who we have in our community, and they call themselves community leaders. You cut them checks. For what? You've been having shootings going on in this city for a long time. You mean to tell me it take you a whole 35 years to figure that out and come to a conclusion? Absolutely not. Your leadership, it sucks. All of you all need to be removed. You don't need to be re-elected, you don't need to be appointed, because you all are covering up wrongdoing. That is sin. You cannot expect this environment or this community to change when you steady sit around here and you cover up wrongdoing in your own police department. And you know what? I see why all these people quit, and that's exactly why their black police chief ain't wanna do it, because you wanted your hands in it, so you got your hands tied in this too. That's why you ain't answering. I'm glad for your suggestion, told y'all not to open your mouth, but I'm telling you now, 48 hours, the clock starts now, it starts now, and you got 48 hours. If you don't, it's a building right over there called the Supreme Court, and we'll be going right there, and I see her and her legal team, and I'll be ready to rumble. I don't understand for the life of me why y'all keep playing with people and their mental health. I'm tired of it. You lock people up when they do wrong, but when your own, break your own policy and procedures, you do nothing. How you do that but you lock somebody else up? You know what? I'm tired. I'm sick of it. I'm sick of it, and I'm not finna be made to seem as if I'm a clown or if I'm illiterate. I got it on paper, and if you not gonna be true to what you put on paper, get up and resign. If you don't do it, I promise you, the governor get a letter, and I will not stop until y'all realize that you sit here and you put up with everybody else and get a more time to speak, and now you wanna cut me off, right?
Your time is up.
Yeah, I bet my time up too.
Your time is up. Thank you very much.
Yeah, your time is about to be up too, my brother.
Mr. Clerk, can you do a better job of making sure that we have the 30-second mark that people are a little bit?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I know it gets tough sometimes, but yeah, appreciate that. Mr. Sims, did we get Mr. Sims' media straightened out? All right, let's go to the next speaker, please.
The next speaker will be Harry Brown.
Called Harry Brown.
Oh. Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Harry Brown, 5431. I hear all this stuff going on. I look at that man up there, Reese Gold, making $295,000. Good God almighty. Mr. Mayor, at the previous meeting, I have seen you sitting on the desk, eating during the meeting. I am sure I can speak for most speakers who come to speak, that they would like you to refrain from eating so you can give your full attention to the speakers. While we were speaking, I was, at the last meeting, I was getting close to the end of my speech. You stated that I had 20 seconds left, and as I was about to close, you stated that I had three minutes. You're not paying attention to what you're doing, man. That is an indication that you are not giving full attention to what you are doing while sitting on the desk. When the session of unagenda speakers were ending, you stated that we are now unagenda speakers. That was when you offered an apology, when you realized that you had made a mistake. I am asking that you pay attention to what you are doing while sitting on the desk, please. Now, I have come here several times asking you to help me get my $31,000 severance pay that Anita wrongfully took from me. Do you still think I don't deserve that $31,000? Anita abused her power and violated my 14th Amendment rights when she took what was undeniably mine. It was for the racist and bigoted reasons it was taken from me. Anita was doing what her racist and bigoted leaders wanted her to do, and by what the city charter allowed her to do. There is no provision in the charter that protects city employees. During the city attorney's education session on the charter, I asked her if there were any plans to include provisions for city employees in the charter. She stated that she could not respond to my question. If there are no provisions provided for city employees, the charter is not worth a hill of being, and employees can continue to be beat up on as I was, as I was beat up on for 19 years and three months of employment with continual severe documented depression. Mayor Daley, confer with your spiritual leader and ask her if you are doing the right thing in the way you handling my situation. Mayor, it's never too late.
You're at three minutes.
It's never too late to do the right thing.
Thank you. Your three minutes are up.
Now, what do you?
Your three minutes are up.
I'm asking, look at other people come over here and spend more time, I'm just asking you a simple question.
No, sir, your three minutes are up. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Our next speaker, please.
You are one sorry man, and I want everybody to know.
Mr. Brown, your time is up, please, sir. Everybody has the same amount of time. Thank you very much.
That's a lie, you are lying.
Mr. Brown, thank you very much.
You didn't do it with Ms. Johnson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. So, Mr. Sims, we're trying to fix the camera real quick. Okay, yeah, can we get to the next speaker while we're working on this?
Sure, we'll do that, Mayor. Our next speaker is Ernie Payne.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Ernie Payne, 2006 East Indian Head Drive. Almost five years ago, I was honored to be the City Commission's sole appointee to the Independent Ethics Board. My current term will expire soon, but I'm not here today to request reappointment. Instead, I'm here to inform you that I've tendered my resignation to the Executive Director effective immediately, and I'm here to explain why. I'm here entirely on my own behalf. I do not speak for the Ethics Board. The duties of the Ethics Board, as stated in the charter, include to recommend proposed ordinances, resolutions, or charter amendments to the City Commission in all areas of ethics and corruption. It is clear that the Ethics Board can only be effective in this role if the City Commission is open to further reform, and it has been shown that there are areas where the majority of you are not. Most of you were first elected in 2018, and you initially inspired a great deal of hope that you were going to turn around the environment of distrust that had been left by previous commissioners. We hope that you would promote both the actual and the perceived integrity of city government. Too many of us have been disappointed in this hope in recent years. In March of 2022, you addressed a series of recommendations by the Ethics Board, many of which were intended to improve the transparency of city government by bringing lobbying into the sunshine. The majority of the City Commission voted to reject most of the Ethics Board's recommendations last year, including all recommendations for lobbying reform. I appreciate the support for greater transparency shown by the votes of Commissioners Porter and Matlow, but as with so many critical votes, their voices were drowned out. It has been frustrating to see the efforts of the Ethics Board defeated in this manner. I also have to be true to the mission of maintaining the perceived integrity of the Board, and it has become more difficult to maintain the appearance of impartiality when I am in such opposition to the decisions of the City Commission majority with regard to ethics policy.
You're at 30 seconds.
It is for these reasons that I feel compelled to relinquish my seat on the Ethics Board. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Did we get the camera worked out? We have not. Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's.
Maurice Thomas would be next speaker and would be followed by Darius Baker.
Okay. Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Larice Thomas, fifteen-ten Escadrill Drive, Tallahassee, Florida, three-two-three-zero-eight. Good afternoon, commissioners. I am Larice Thomas, and I'm the executive director of the North Florida Community Development Corporation. The North Florida Community Development Corporation has come together to put a salute to fifty years of hip-hop on Friday, November the tenth. Us, the Community Development Corporation, along with various community partners, want to sponsor this salute to fifty years of hip-hop as a part of the national trend that has taken place over the last year. We are inviting the city of Tallahassee to come and be a partner with us on this event. As you are aware, our community has been racked with gun violence with our youth. We want to present a positive experience and invite them to come in and be a part by providing an opportunity for the Gen X and the TikTokers to come and perform, write a, uh, song about stopping the gun violence. We have a contest that we have for them. We also will allow them to perform that night. We are excited to be bringing in national recording artists, none other than Dougie Fresh and MC Light, and we are honoring our very own Tallahassee T-Pain for his, uh, contributions to the hip-hop community. So we are coming to you tonight, uh, requesting your assistance to make sure that this event, uh, is one that takes place, also that one is the caliber of the type of event that we are trying to put on. We are excited that the county has come on as a presenting sponsor by giving us a donation of twenty-five thousand dollars. We have raised forty-five thousand dollars to date. The event is costing us approximately a hundred thousand dollars, and so therefore, we are coming to you, our city commission, to ask for your assistance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Is Darius Baker, then Gregory James.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Darius Baker. Address is twenty-seven oh-two Masterson Lane. Uh, many know me as being a music director here in the capital city of Tallahassee nights live for over seventeen years. I've humbly and, uh, I've been honored to actually be a music director for several family days and things that have been, uh, sponsored by the city and county. Uh, during these events, I pride myself on bringing entertainment that brings all people together. So when the hip-hop, fifty years of hip-hop came to me, I said, I must be a part of this. This is something that's celebrated worldwide, the culture, and it's all about non-violence. If you go back to the very start of hip-hop and the culture, and it's about fellowship, and it's about, uh, just celebrating art. So bringing in these artists who, and Dougie Fresh and MC Light, who actually were a part of the biggest nonviolent movement in this nation to date, which was called self, self-destruction that they actually put out, and they're excited about coming here. But I also was more excited about honoring T-Pain, who many know him as his real name Fahim, who grew up on Ridge Road right here in our city, went to records. He was homeschooled. I mean, this guy has sold over sixteen million albums, fifty million download stream albums, sixteen Grammy nominations, two Grammys, and I think it's befitting that we honor him and give him a platform to give back to our community, and we need it so much. The message does not change to our youth. No violence. Put the guns down. But I think the messengers should change every now and then, and he has a platform, and he has the ear of our youth. So to whom much is given, much is required. So if we give him a platform to come back here and to instill in our youth, hey, if I made it from that area, if I made it from Ridge Road, you can make it too, and I did it the right way. I've researched all of his music since he's went solo. This man is married. This man preaches about financial literacy because he made some ill decisions when he was catapulted into this fame and how all of this money. And now he's talking about doing it the right way, having his own business right now. So we're not honoring somebody who is a stranger to the area. This is our own, and I think we should do this. And I'm very excited about being a part of it. I really would love the help of the city to put this on, and I could just see all of the commissioners, the mayor, walking with him down Ridge Road, and he could say the things that he passed, the thing that he faced, walking to school, walking to the bus stop, and hearing different things in his community, and actually visiting the home where he grew up, where his dad allowed him to build a studio in his room.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you, sir. And moving up from that to worldwide stardom. So he is very excited about coming back home. I think it's an opportunity that we don't wanna miss to actually give him a platform to help us fight this violence in our area and give the city something to celebrate together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Gregory James, followed by Shamari Feaster.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Name Gregory James. Address is eleven-thirty-four Abraham Street, Tallahassee, Florida. Certainly, when, uh, I was invited to the conversation and they said fifty years of hip-hop, I thought maybe they was talking about the wrong person because I passed the Life Church International, and I was like, where's the gospel? But when I began to understand the meaning and why they say we want you here, because we understand the work that you're doing in our community, the efforts that you're doing to stop violence, and really understanding the history of hip-hop, understand the message that is being presented, I was gladly, gladly excited about joining these other individuals and the effort to make sure that we can celebrate this as a way of, one, bringing a message to our community and our youth. As you all know, when it comes to the violence, it's the music. It's the message. And when we can look back over fifty years, when we can honor someone who is from our neighborhood that has music, that has positive message, and then we can bring youth together, and then these individuals who are coming are willing to go into some of our schools and share the message on financial literacy and gun violence, then it says something to my heart. It says that when we can get different messengers, that our kids can identify with the same message if we don't say but one. Whatever investment that the city does to help in this effort, that investment yielded a return. When we talk about T-Pain and the work that he has done, it's vitally important that we, as a community, recognize him in an era that was powerful and positively impacting. One of the things that I feel that could be done is that we can take that street, Ernest Street, I mean, uh, State Road, and we could put a mark, a marker there with T-Pain Lane, recognizing the fact that as we celebrate these fifty years, we wanna have a, a major impact with someone that grew up in our neighborhood that has gone on to represent us well and to give insight and enlightenment to our community. So with that being said, I pray that each one of you, as commissioners, as mayor, would wholeheartedly embrace what we are proposing tonight and see this as another way...
You're at thirty seconds.
...of making an investment on what is happening in our community. It's about bridging the gap, and by any means, that we can take a positive message in a different voices to make that clear, then I pray that we can do it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Shamari Feaster, followed by Stanley Sims. Shamari Feaster. Then Stanley Sims.
Did we get the camera fixed, or...? No.
Mr. Mayor, we could attempt to fix it over the break or when you're done with the speakers. I think they've gotta physically deal with the, the camera, and we're happy to try to do that.
Mr. Sims, I give you the choice, and I'm sorry. I give you the time now, or if you're willing to wait and give us an opportunity over the break to fix it, we could try to straighten it out.
No, sir. My name is, um, Stanley Sims.
Three minutes, sir.
I'm at thirteen-twenty Avondale Way. We can't reach them all in the church. The Bible say go to the highways and the byways, but, Mayor, I'm tired. I came in this building today, and I'm tired of fighting this man. Officer Moore gave me instructions. I don't wanna spend my time giving them to you. I've given them to the deputy city manager. I can't discern, and I'm scared speaking these words because I get mocked. I can't discern if a city employee wanna speak to me or not. These are the kind of restrictions he is putting on me, but I ask... And you know what, Diane? Look up. You can at least look at my tears. Can you, can you also ignore my heart, my broken heart? Can you, can you ignore that? And you went battle every Sunday. Man, I don't understand. This man views me as an insurrectionist. They marked me as I didn't pass English. When I see staff, when I'm sitting here watching him with his phone, I didn't know if he was sending emojis on me, because guess what? It's not just me now, Mayor. It's your fellow elected officials. Bill Proctor, County Commissioner Caban. It's the media. It's County Commissioner Welch. When does this stop? Now, he responded to me by sending Officer Moore, 'cause I asked Officer Moore, where did you get this from? He said, I got this from the top. I say, who is the top? He said Reese Gold. When I went outside and I got Officer Moore, 'cause these are the parameters that he set for me.
You're at thirty seconds.
I have to ask Officer Moore to ask Cynthia, is it okay for me to speak to her? Because that could be a violation. How can I discern if somebody wants me to speak to them? Mayor, the city has said quiet on these text messages. We deserve an answer. I deserve an answer. Eyes tired, boss. Eyes ain't gonna be, eyes ain't gonna be no trouble.
You're at three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Our next speaker, please.
Mayor, the only other speaker form I have, um, at this time is Shamari Feaster, who did not, um, respond when called, so I believe we're finished with speakers.
Alright, so we have time, colleagues. Why don't we go into the sharing of ideas? And look, in the past couple of weeks, this has gotten to be, I think, uh, more of a political weaponization of the city commission. I'm asking everybody to work with me. This is a great opportunity for us to share announcements, talk about what's going on in the community, or if you've got an incredible idea to help move this community forward, to be considered here at the city commission, by all means, let's bring it to the table. But I can't in, in good conscience, sit back and, and have the, um, um, the, the, the type of interaction that we've had in the past amongst ourselves and amongst staff. So I'm asking each one of y'all, please work with me. We're gonna end on a high note here, and let's begin the sharing of ideas. I'll even shake it up and go to the mayor pro tem first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, let me start with, uh, we heard from three community members regarding the fifty years of hip-hop. I just happen to be young enough to have been around, um, all of those fifty years, and, uh, love, love, love MC Light, uh, and Dougie Fresh, six minutes, six minutes, six minutes. Dougie Fresh, you're on.
Uh, uh, oh.
And, thank you. And I also have had the, uh, honor of knowing T-Pain before he was T-Pain. He was a little runt running around the hair salon where his sister did my hair. And so I knew about his studio at the house because he talked about it. So I, I think that, uh, as a city, we should give honor where honor is due. And I am asking, uh, my colleagues to support this event wholeheartedly. Now, I know that in order to do anything, it, it, you know, there's costs. But what I'm asking us to do is to support this event with some in-kind services that would normally have to be paid for, such as use of the park, Lake Anita is the location, one of our finest, newest parks on the south side, uh, waiver of fees for the use of the park, for, uh, the, the permits that were issued, provided sanitation services before and after, road closures and barricades, and marketing assistance to make sure that we get this out wide, to get this information out, uh, really, really wide. We, um, have several events going on on that particular day. That's, that's the Friday before Veterans Day. And I know we have a parade. There's, uh, another event taking place in French Town, and then this event. And so, um, I've been told that the sheriff's office is gonna provide the, uh, law enforcement for, for this event because we are just spread too, too, so thin, and then there's two football games the next day. So I am, I, I'd like to make a motion that we, the city of Tallahassee, home of T-Pain and many other greats, uh, would support this by providing these types of services at no cost to the, uh, event organizers.
Second.
Okay. Motion on the table made by Commissioner Diana Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion?
I just have...
Commissioner Richardson.
A quick question, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, and this may not be a possibility, but you remember in the million dollars that we allocated for, uh, violence reduction, gun violence reduction in particular in the community, five hundred thousand of that was for community organizations that addressed this issue, and I believe we only allocated, what was it, three hundred thousand?
Three hundred and ninety.
Three hundred and...
Ninety thousand.
Three hundred and ninety thousand. So that leaves us a little over a hundred thousand left in that pot. Is that, is it possible that we may be able to donate some of that towards this event as a cash contribution?
Mr. Baner.
I, I, I think it is possible, Commissioner. I, I believe it would fall outside of the definition of how you structured that.
Okay.
But I believe it could be reassigned if you wanted, if, if, if you took action. I, I think I need to bring that back to you and kind of define how you...
Right.
You parked that. I think you're exactly right. There's been five hundred thousand dollars assigned, three hundred and ninety have been obligated. So I think you do have some dollars, but I think you might have to tweak how, um, you, you really how it would be applied. I think that's possible. Um, if you wanted to do something like that, I would ask, uh, for an opportunity to bring that item back so you can get in the right posture.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I would...
When is the next commission meeting, um?
Yeah, let me put this in perspective, 'cause I was talking to the manager about this too. So our next meeting is November eighth. Now, for the motion that's on the table in, no. Our next, yeah, our next meeting is November eighth.
Yes, sir.
So for the motion that's on the table, uh, regarding in-kind services, that can be done. That can be done now. From the policy standpoint of financial contribution to help underwrite it, that would need to come back. I think it's very appropriate to take up the motion that's on the table now because part of it is marketing and making sure. I think it's very appropriate to bring back an item for consideration on the eighth. Granted, it's two days before, but this is the quickest that it could come back. Um, but regardless, um, I, I, I think both ideas are worthy of consideration. I'm prepared to vote in favor of the motion on the table, and then after that, if we wanna come back for a second motion to be considered as well, we could do so. Is that, is that alright, Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Okay. Did I get that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So on point, on the motion that's on the table for the in-kind services made by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, any further conversation? See, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes five-oh. Um, to come back, you're still on your time, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, um, with what Commissioner Richardson just said and what, what will come back, I, I think that, um, what we wanna be careful of is that we know that the, the, um, county has weighed in to the tune of about twenty-five thousand. And I don't know what the total cost of the in-kind services are that we are, we've, we provide it, but I, I don't want us to exceed what our partner, um, across the street are doing in that. So when we, if we're looking at, um, some dollars, we wanna make sure that we kind of stay within, in that realm because they're providing cash and no services. We're providing services, and if we, you know, have some available cash, then we...
If, if you'd like to make a motion, I'm gonna ask the manager to weigh in as well. I think it's very appropriate. And what I think they would bring back would be the analysis of what was contributed through in-kind, and then a remaining if you wanted to cap it at twenty-five thousand to match the county as a title sponsor, uh, with the suggestion of a dollar donation as well. Is that what you were thinking?
That's what I was thinking, but I don't wanna count the money because I don't know. That's not what I do.
Understood.
You know, so...
Mr. Baner.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, actually, Commissioner, that's probably a good idea. We, we need to estimate the in-kind. Of course, with your direction tonight, we will do that, but there's a value that we can estimate how much that is and kind of lay it out and then give you some options. If you wanted to augment it with cash to match what the county does, that... If you wanted to augment it with cash to match what the county does, that makes sense to us. That'd be consistent with how you would operate otherwise, and so we'd be happy to do that.
Excellent. Is that a motion, Mayor Pro Tem?
I would make that, I would make that motion.
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Mayor Pro Tem, you still have the floor.
Thank you. And to also begin to look at the process of establishing a very noticeable marker on the corner of a state and Ridge Road where he grew up to commemorate that, the location and where he is. I would ask us to provide via an agenda item what it would require to make that happen, whatever steps we have to go through as well as the cost to do so.
Motion on the table to bring back an agenda item at the November 8th meeting in regards to memorializing in some way, which I think is a great idea.
Yeah.
The corner of the street, we'll figure it out, how to memorialize it. Are we clear on direction, Mr. Manager? Okay. Is there a second to, I'll second the motion. Motion on table made by Mayor Pro Tem, the mayor seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, passes 5-0. Mayor Pro Tem, you have the floor.
Thank you. And since we're in such a good mood, it has been brought to my attention that Florida A&amp;M, the Florida A&amp;M portion of Wanish Way is being discussed by our former congressman, Al Lawson, with Florida A&amp;M about renaming Wanish Way to Atthea Gibson's Way. And for those of you who may not know who she is, she is, she was a graduate of Florida A&amp;M University. She won the Wimbledon and several other, I got a whole list of things here. But she, she also won several other tennis match, tennis championships, came to Florida A&amp;M on a scholarship to play basketball, ended up playing tennis and golf and all those, a number of things. And she is a woman who not only excelled, but she changed the world. She was one of the first African Americans to win the, to win Wimbledon.
Wimbledon.
And so they are, the university would like to change the name of Wanish Way to Atthea Gibson's Way. The, and of course, I believe that, I think the process is already begun. There's been some conversation, I believe, across the street, the county. But if there is the need for city support, I'm asking that our commission will agree to provide the necessary support for the renaming of Wanish Way to Atthea Gibson's Way. That would be my motion.
There's a motion.
I would second the motion for discussion.
Sure, there's a second by Commissioner Richardson. Let's discuss.
Yeah, the only question that I had, it was my understanding that Wanish Way through the FAMU campus to Orange Avenue is FAMU property. And so we would be looking at then that portion of Wanish Way that goes from Orange Avenue south to Bragg. And there are some residences on that portion of, of Wanish Way. So that would be the issue.
There is a process. We would, we, is, did I say, Mr. Mayor, is Steve still here?
Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Richardson, you've got the floor to finish.
Again, we would just have to go through the process, the street name renaming, which is our normal process for the city for that section of Wanish Way.
So I think, it's my understanding, because all this goes through the county, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. And so the motion on the table is to support the initiative moving forward. The initiative is to follow the process. The property owners, while FAMU has a significant portion of the land of where we're talking, you are correct, Commissioner Richardson, there are private landowners along the way that have to sign off. That's all part of the, I think we're all talking the same language.
Okay.
That yes, we have to go through the process. This is not a, we're just going to do it.
Right.
But having said that, I do think, I think renaming that portion of Wanish for Atthea Gibson would be phenomenal. I mean, she, I mean, she's in the, you know, the tennis Hall of Fame, FAMU Hall of Fame. First, what, Grand Slam winner, I believe? Just an amazing athlete. And yeah, so I'll support the motion as well. Any other further comments? Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Mayor Pro Tem, you have the floor.
And finally, happy homecoming, Florida A&amp;M. This morning, we had the pleasure of attending a breakfast put on by the Capitol City Chamber. Kudos to them for doing this. They do this on an annual basis. And today was a very good breakfast. We're talking about the economic impact that Florida A&amp;M has. And Mr. Mayor, you, you did the math. You said that you know that Blueprint provided a $10 million investment. And according to the numbers we saw, Florida A&amp;M earned that, half of that in one weekend of homecoming. Five million dollars in a weekend.
And that's not counting Perry Street.
And that's not counting Perry Street. Can't count Perry Street.
It probably did include Perry Street.
No, 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 you can't, you can't capture Perry Street. So I wanted to just, just say happy homecoming, Florida A&amp;M. Happy belated homecoming to Florida State University. Thank you for winning. And we are looking forward to a great weekend in our city and looking forward to hosting so many people who are coming to Tallahassee and, and just, just really happy to be a part of all the activities that are going to take place. Thank you very much.
On point, it was a fascinating presentation, Mr. Manager, Madam Attorney. Jim, talking about the $10 million investment that Blueprint did in the Bragg. And what they did was they went back and did the economic estimate. This is towards Development Council. And they've figured out that last year's FAMU homecoming weekend alone, one weekend, FAMU homecoming, was 5.2 million dollars, which is absolutely amazing. So when we talk about the investment of the stadium, literally, it was a three-day period that made up over half of that investment. And of course, we all know that if you look over the course of the entire football season, by halfway through football season, the investment was made. But nonetheless, it was a good presentation and great breakfast. It was wonderful.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have, I've got some updated information, breaking news.
All right, Mayor Pro Tem.
We cannot wait for, and I'm asking you not to wait until we meet again regarding the marker for T. Payne. Because while he's here, I think the one, the plan is to do the unveiling of the marker. So I need to revisit that motion because apparently it's the city, not the county. I'm looking at city manager. It's the city, not the county for the, for the, where the marker is to be placed.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Manager.
The, as, as I understand it, this would be an honorary marker. So it's not a changing of the street name. So that would be solely in the purview of the city.
Okay.
And so you could give that direction. I don't know of any complications related to that. It may just simply be production time, location time. But we certainly can accept your direction tonight if that's your will.
Okay, that is, that is, that is the will of the community. And so what I'd like to do is go back.
Yeah, let me check with the attorney. Let's see, what we need to do, Madam Attorney, to get in the proper posture for what the Mayor Pro Tem?
What I did previously.
Well, it's the same meeting, so reconsider.
Okay.
Your motion to reconsider.
Okay. So, and is that a majority or supermajority vote to reconsider? Majority. All right. So there is a motion on the table to reconsider.
Second.
Previous action in regard specifically to the marker honoring T. Payne.
Right.
Okay. And there's a second by Commissioner Richardson. Any, any discussion? Are we all on, any questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes 5-0. So now there is no motion on the table, and I'm coming back to the Mayor Pro Tem for a motion.
Okay, the motion that I would like to make is that we will, we would honor T. Payne with an honorary marker in the location near where he grew up, State Road and Ridge Road, and that this commission will support the creation and placement of this in time for the unveiling to occur the weekend of the hip hop recognition.
Okay. Are we all clear?
Second.
There's a second to the motion made by Commissioner Richardson. Everybody clear? Any comments, questions? All those favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, Commissioner Richardson.
The only thing I had, earlier I had, Mayor Pro Tem, you were out of the room at the time. But I had asked, when the, the report was being given about the Midtown master plan and the presentation that was given, my question was, I know you're heading up that initiative on West Pensacola. Is that what you all are moving towards, that kind of, I won't say master plan, but plan for what they're asking in terms of a sense of place on that West Pensacola Street corridor?
Well, I will say that we did not discuss that. The meeting that I was in, we were basically gathering some additional concerns of what could be done kind of immediately for some of the things that were occurring there. Now, there, there may have been some subsequent or previous discussion. The city manager and his staff would have to speak to that. But that was not what I discussed with the, in that meeting about developing a master plan or anything. We basically were looking at what is already being done to help with the area and what could be done to help with that area. So I would yield to the city manager, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Artie, would you mind joining us? Even if you don't know this topic, you're much better than I am at this. Commissioner, we know there, there, I believe, five sense of place areas set out in your comprehensive plan, I believe it is. And so those are pre-designated. It does not include West Pensacola Street. Now, with that said, I do believe the effort and the discussion on West Pensacola Street is probably consistent. Now, it's early in its process relative to the Midtown. You heard the discussion started in 2010. But, but I think, I think we have some, some blueprint interest, we have some state interest, and a combination of investments. And I think Artie and his team and others on the city team, I think that would be the posture. How do we pull these together to kind of represent, you know, a sense of place? Maybe not officially designated, but that would have a similar character. So I think, Artie helped me, I'm probably not describing it perfectly, but that would be what I would envision in terms of effort and kind of how we collaborate with all the various things that are happening.
That sounds.
Artie's the best employee ever, by the way.
I just want to make sure, Mr. City Manager, that 10 years from now, we're not where they were in Midtown after 10 years. That, that we assure the businesses and residences and students, because we know what's going on now. We heard how it's physically impacting that segment. And I don't want us to be 10 years from now saying, what can we do to still help that West Pensacola Street corridor? So that, that's my concern. It doesn't have to be a sense of place. It doesn't have to be a master plan. But addressing the issues in a comprehensive manner of what they've brought before us as a city commission for that corridor. And I mean, we know what the issues are. If you drive that corridor, you see them every day. We've heard what the fiscal impact has been to the student apartments, of course, and the crime. And so I think it, I don't want, like I said, I don't want 10 years from now us to still be discussing, putting a plan together or thinking what we're going to address. We need to give them some more immediate relief than that. And I thought, Mayor Pro Tem, that those were the kinds of things you all were discussing in your session.
Well, on point, Mr. Mayor, we did, but we didn't discuss a development of a master plan. But I want to be careful not to use that term.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we talked about what the issues were. We talked about how to resolve some of those issues. And the sheriff's department told us what they're doing. And I've received pictures of some of the activities that's taking place over there on behalf of the sheriff's department as well as TPD and others in the area. But when we start talking about developing a master plan, that's, that gets a little deeper than what we did in a two-hour meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Excellent.
That's all I had.
All right, Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, can I just, on point?
Yeah, Commissioner Porter.
Can, can you clarify, Mr. City Manager, what you said? I mean, I'm just wondering what are, and I can take my own time to do this. But what are, do we have next steps planned? I mean, you talked about Blueprint and the state and other agencies. Do we have a plan for those next steps?
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I couldn't tell you those tonight. I'd be happy to send a summary, but we've got other departments and areas like planning engaged. And we know some immediate steps are not necessarily infrastructure investment planning. As Commissioner Williams Cox indicated, the sheriff's office in terms of law enforcement is engaged. That's most immediate. If it's okay, I, we'd be happy to provide any kind of summary. But I think right now, where we are is looking at it more holistically. Probably a great example was earlier about the sidewalk projects. You know, giving direction and strategy, it helps us kind of try to pull those together. So I think that's where we are, to be very responsive to Commissioner Richardson with some haste. Not, not, you know, a 30-year vision. So I don't have the immediate details, but that's the posture and approach.
Okay, thank you. And I believe, did we not ask for an item to come back with some of that information out with an update? I thought at our last meeting, we had asked for that.
I don't recall.
I don't, okay.
All right, Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll just start by saying, I do agree. I think things have gotten too political on this body. I do, nevertheless, I do think I'd make sure we don't confuse being political with doing our duty as commissioners to provide oversight and execute our responsibilities as outlined by the city charter. So I have a lot of concerns with the way our city government operates. I know our city charter specifically prohibits us from dictating any type of appointment for any officials outside of the city manager. So when we saw the HR director, Ellen Blair, removed based on what seemed like what she put into text, I had very strong feelings about that removal. But that, there's not the authority in our charter to take action on that. But what we do have authority and a responsibility to do as city commissioners is to request information from our employees, request information particularly on the performance of our appointed officials. So in regards to the somewhat heated conversation we had at our last meeting involving derogatory text messages sent by, by city staff, I think our city policies speak to a lot of that, that type of behavior. So I'm going to request, I'm going to make a motion that we bring back an information item by the city manager to explain to us any corrective action that he's taken.
Second.
Say, say that one more time before I recognize the motion.
Sure. My motion is that the city manager bring back an informational item, explaining any corrective action he's taken due to the derogatory messages that we saw.
Okay, I don't know if the motion is in proper posture because that's an HR issue that needs to go.
No, Mr. Mayor, this is.
Mr. Matlow, let me, let me finish my thoughts real quick. That needs to go through the HR process. I know that you have requested a formal investigation by the Inspector General's office. Dennis, would you like to provide clarification as well?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, there has been no request for any action specifically by the Inspector General's office.
Was there informal action that was requested?
No, there were just some discussions. Commissioner Matlow and I had some discussions, but it never went beyond that.
Okay. Anyway, I believe it's an HR action that, quite frankly, I don't know, could even still be in the works right now. So I am very hesitant to even acknowledge the motion, let alone support the motion, knowing that if there are any violations, we have to let the process work itself out. Having just taken my HR annual training, I found it very enlightening. But before I entertain the motion, let's just, let's just have a discussion about this, a civil discussion about this. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that since all of the appointed officials report to us, we have an evaluation tool that we can use to evaluate the appointed official and their performance. And we also have the opportunity to communicate one-on-one, either in briefings or we can call a meeting with the appointed officials to discuss whatever it is we need to discuss. I would prefer doing that as opposed to, you know, bringing it out onto the dais because I think that. I think that our community expects us to come here and focus on them and not on us. And I think that if, the way I operate, I would rather deal with something of this nature, one-on-one with the individual who I have the supervisory authority with, and to provide some, get information from them. And if it's not suitable, then I can then provide some corrective action that I'd like to see with the appointed official. And what we have to remember is that none of these, none of the appointed officials report to us singularly. All of them report to all of us. And without, collectively, and without a majority of us requiring something to be done, it should not be done, especially when it comes to how we manage our appointed officials. We have our evaluation process, and you know, some of us, you know, we evaluate based on the performance that we see. And I think that we need to continue using that to get the action that we want from our appointed official.
Commissioner Richardson.
I agree with Commissioner Williams-Cox on that issue there. I think we have a process for addressing, or the mayor pro tem, I'm sorry. We have a process for addressing issues that we have concern with. And I think that's the process that's been in place for years and one that we should continue with. And if a majority of us feel like, through that process, these are the kinds of issues that need to come back to us, then we have a process in place for being able to address issues that we are concerned about with respect to our appointed official.
And I agree. I wholeheartedly would hope that we all sit down with the manager and let him know and all the department, you know, all of the four appointments, what your thoughts are. I certainly did. Commissioner Matlow, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to, but I hope you will. And look, yes, let him know what your thoughts are specifically on this matter. Truth is, this is interesting times. I have been on the receiving end of those emails. I've been on the receiving end of that social media from your office, Commissioner Matlow, but I just shake it off and I move forward. So I think it is a... I'll leave it at that. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do agree with Commissioner Richardson about, we have a process, and part of the process is the public meetings of this elected body. And I think if we go down a path where we're not going to entertain motions based on what we agree with or don't agree with, honestly, I think that's a very dangerous path to even consider exploring when we talk about just democratic ideals in general. But I digress on that. What I'm asking for isn't to go make HR decisions. I'm not asking for anything that's outside, that's somehow exempt from any type of public record. What I'm asking for is to exercise our charter authority, which specifically says, "The commission or any member thereof may at any time request information from any employee of the city relating to the performance of the appointed official," that's our city manager, "of his official duties and office operations." One of his official duties as our city manager is to implement and execute the city commission and HR policies that we have set forth. All I'm asking is for an informational item to come back, seeing what we have on the record, what we know has taken place by members of this government, and provide us an update, provide us the information of what happened, lay it out, how, if what happened violated policy, what corrective action was taken. If it did not, if it's the manager's opinion, no policies were violated, an informational item that he did not take any action. That's simply all I'm asking for, and that was what was concluded in the motion that was also seconded.
Sure. And let me clarify, as we discussed at the last meeting as well. Under Robert's Rules of Order, as I mentioned, it does give me the authority of the chair of this meeting to decide. Now, I'm going to recognize your motion, and we're going to take a vote, but just like Blueprint, just like the county, just like the CRA. And I'm going to step up and try to be a better leader than I have been in the past to make sure that we keep the discussion civil and try to keep this together. Quite honestly, I think I owe that to all four of you and to the city commission and the city of Tallahassee at large. We need to keep this civil and have these type of conversations which we're having. Now, to the issue at point, yes, we will entertain your motion, we'll have a vote. And I have finally decided, I understand exactly where you're coming from. The difference is, there are four of us that have, I hope, had that conversation behind closed doors where I believe HR policy should be implemented and reported upon. You believe it should be done at the dais. I'm not going to vote in favor of your motion. So let's go ahead and take up Commissioner Matlow's motions on the table, seconded by Commissioner Porter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those that oppose?
Aye.
And the motion fails three to two with the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and Commissioner Richardson in dissent. Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And secondly, I too wanted to wish everybody happy homecoming. I think we've been blessed with near-perfect weather the entire weekend, so everybody enjoy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be quick. I too, I mean, FSU's homecoming last week was amazing, and I'm looking forward to FAMU's homecoming as well. There's nothing else, literally nothing else. I'm going to get up at 5:00 AM for, other than that parade, so I hope to see everyone there.
It has been a wonderful two weeks with homecoming season. And, you know, I do know that this puts a lot of strain on our resources. I want to thank everybody within the city organization that has to work overtime, double time, whatever it may be, whether it's law enforcement, Parks and Recreation, Fire Department, all the departments that have a role in these amazing weeks, because it has been great. And beautification, I've received a lot of compliments actually recently during homecoming from families that were in town visiting, talking about how wonderful Tallahassee looked. So just thank you all for all your hard work and dedication. I also can't remember if we mentioned it at the last meeting, and if we did, I'm going to mention it again, that the city of Tallahassee was ranked as one of the top 20 medium-sized cities in the United States of America out of 17,000 municipalities by CNN, once again being recognized for her excellence and for her beauty, and I think it's amazing. We're going to take a 25-minute break. We will be back at 6 o'clock for the public hearing. Item, let me get my glasses on, sorry. Item number 14.01, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 14.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-0-35, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section six of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, writing for severability conflicts and an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 23-0-35. R. Richard Yates Jr., as the owner of parcel ID 1126200090000. Paul's Chase Residential Phases 4 through 6, located at 4475 Buck Lake Road, has submitted a petition for annexation to the city of Tallahassee. Petition is signed by R. Richard Yates, as the owner of the private parcel in question.
All right. Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Colleagues, discussion, questions, motions?
Move, acceptance.
Okay. Commissioner Matlow has moved for option number one, staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes 4-0 with Commissioner Richardson out of chambers. We are on 14.02. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 14.02 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-0-36, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section six of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of 171.044 Florida statutes, writing for severability conflicts and an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 23-0-36. Azelia Land Group LLC, as the owner of parcel ID 11-11-20-685-000, and located at the corner of Centerville and Pemberton Road, have submitted a petition for annexation to the city of Tallahassee. The petition is signed by Jason Gasvini of Azelia Land Group LLC, as the owner of the private parcel in question.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues.
Move for option one.
Second.
Option number one has been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 14.03, Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.03, three, first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-Z-27, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designated and including additional territory located on 5.02 acres located at 1545 Raymond Dill Road and 3343 Thomasville Road near I-10, approximately 150 feet southeast of the corner of the intersection of Raymond Dill Road and Thomasville Road, as and in the city of Tallahassee, Commercial Parkway CP from Official Residential OR3 and General Commercial C-2 on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city commission, providing for conflicts, provided for severability, provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 23-Z-27, thereby amending the official zoning map from Office Residential OR3 and General Commercial C2 zoning districts to Commercial Parkway zoning district based on the findings and conditions of the planning commission, the information contained in the agenda item, and any evidence presented at the hearing hereon. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Colleagues.
Move for option one.
Staff recommendation, option number one has been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, is there, second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. 14.04, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 14.04 is the second and final public hearing on development agreement for Walani Hill property. Recommended action is option one, hold the second and final public hearing on the development agreement and approve the agreement. This agreement requests that the city commission hold the second of two public hearings for a development agreement between the city and Greenpoint Developers LLC concerning the development of property known as Walani Hill. The property is located north of US 90, Mahan Drive, and east of Interstate 10, that is approximately 894 acres in size. The proposed development contains residential, office, industrial park, and retail commercial uses. Agreement addresses certain traffic concurrency, infrastructure, environmental permitting, and related development issues.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do have three speakers on this item.
Okay.
The first is Rob Lombardo. As with the earlier portion of our meeting, speakers will have three minutes. I'll give you a heads-up at 30 seconds, as will the light system in front of the mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. Pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Rob Lombardo. I live at 9704 Abbey Road in Tallahassee, right alongside Mikkasuki Road. And I have been a volunteer, actually co-founder and current president of Friends of the Mikkasuki Canopy Road Greenway for 28 years. I have watched this park, which is probably one of the most unusual in Tallahassee and North Florida, develop from a beautiful plantation base to this gorgeous park that we now have. I wanted to respond to this question about the development of the hill. The Mikkasuki Canopy Road Greenway is not a part of the hill. This is a separately owned piece of property. It's owned by the state of Florida, has been since 1994. It's managed by DEP, and the local land manager is Leon County Parks and Rec. So the first thing that I wanted to say was that if there is an understanding different than this, then we need to delay consideration of this development until this is clarified. But I can tell you, I have been part of this process for almost over 30 years, and I'm pretty sure that the agreements that we had early on with Powerhouse stand today. And there are only four allowed easements through that Greenway property. And Miles Johnson is a close buy and obvious alternative. It borders the Greenpoint Development. In fact, the Greenpoint Development owns land right up to the back of the Greenway. So it's an obvious, very advantageous place to have perhaps another trailhead, parking area, access for all different kinds of park users, including horses. So this is something that we need to sit down again and try to work on. Just a few other things. You know, MCOG, the Greenway is protected also by the encroachment of transportation facilities. This is a Florida DOT, federal DOT requirement, Section 45 CFR 1.48, and called the Section 4F standard.
You're at 30 seconds.
We had to work this out for the Thornton Road Exchange as well. This is something that your planners need to seriously consider. That part of the Greenway has significant environmental significance. This part of the Greenway has some of the original Mettler family grasslands, which are now bird habitats. It has the most famous of all, Red Oak Forest, which is absolutely an unusual and unique asset.
Thank you.
Please delay. Let's work this out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jane Fletcher.
Thanks for joining us. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jane Fletcher. I live at 4149 Arco Drive. I'm also the president currently of Capital City Cyclists, a not-for-profit cycling organization that advocates for...
Ma'am, could you pull your microphone down just a little bit? Thank you.
Sure. That advocates for cyclist and pedestrian safety. We're concerned about the safety of cyclists and pedestrians on the Mikkasuki Greenway with the addition of, with the development of additional roadways crossing the Greenway. Currently, the Greenway is a state conservation area, and it provides a safe place for individuals and families to cycle, walk, and run in a natural green space. The spine road connection which this development would create would be highly disruptive to the Greenway users and will introduce new traffic-related risks to walkers, runners, and cyclists, strollers, and equestrians who use the Greenway. We ask that the decision to be postponed to allow for more public input by trail users to take place. If this agreement had been more visible to users before now, it might contain language that ensures that the road would be the least disruptive to and designed for the safety of trail users. Tallahassee area has seen a disturbing trend of pedestrian and cyclist injuries and deaths. The Greenway is a place where people feel safe and they can walk and cycle safely. The agreement has a road designed for 45 mile-per-hour traffic that would cross the Greenway. If you move this forward, we ask that prior to designing and connecting to Mikkasuki Road or crossing the Greenway, that you amend the agreement to require that they conduct a traffic safety study and that the road be designed to include best practices for safe road design, speed controls, and non-motorized user crossings. Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, you sent us all an email earlier. I did not respond to your email, and I made a mistake. I thought at first that this was a quasi-judicial proceeding, and I was wrong. That's the only reason why I did not respond to your email, and I think two of your colleagues also emailed me. So I just wanted to say I'm sorry. I was confused on this issue until I had a conversation with the attorney this morning, but that's why I didn't respond to you. Okay, our next speaker.
Next speaker and the last speaker on this item is Richard Deravi, who is here to answer questions if you have them.
Okay. Let's turn it over. Let's turn it over, and let's have a discussion, conversation. First of all, does, any comment from the manager in regards to some of the concerns that were raised?
Yes, sir. Actually, I think we could probably provide some information. Artie White probably is our best expert on this. This particular land has a lot of history.
Right.
Even preceding the creation of the Greenway. And access across the Greenway was incorporated into comprehensive plan many years ago. That's then transferred to the PUD. You'll recall you adopted the PUD, I believe, in June. The item before you is related to the development agreement and concurrency that goes along with new development. So I think it probably would be helpful if Artie could share kind of the history and, you know, what's happened and where we are, and kind of what are the rights of the property owner, and how does it impact the Greenway?
Absolutely. Mayor, commissioners, thank you. Just as the city manager and actually as the speaker, Rob Lombardo said, there is a lot of history that kind of goes back with the Greenway. Going back to when Powerhouse owned the property, and then it was conveyed to the trust for public land, in that process, there were roadway crossings identified and included in the recorded deed of the property. So the roadway crossings for these different corridors actually predate the establishment of the Greenway. It was then conveyed from the trust for public land to the state of Florida, and as was mentioned, Leon County is the managing entity. Leon County is the managing entity, does the management plan for the Greenway, and in that it acknowledges the existence of these easements. And so everything from the deed of the property to the management plan acknowledges that these crossings have been contemplated before the establishment of the Greenway as the Mikkasuki Canopy Road Greenway. Then kind of moving on from that, during the development of the Walani Critical Area Plan, those were included in there, again, because it's in the management plan and in the deed for the property. And so it's kind of carried through to the comprehensive plan, and of course, the plan unit development has to be consistent with the comp plan, so the PUD includes the roadway crossings. It really all stems from the original establishment of the Greenway.
Mr. Mayor, is that helpful? I mean, if we need to, we can speak about what the development agreement does. There was the mention of the spine road. That would be a road to be built by the developer. I think John Reddick can, we can hand off from the history and the planning, John can talk about the development agreement, the obligation of the developer to build the road, and I think, again, the term was used spine road.
No.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, commissioners. So carrying on from what Artie was saying is, the development agreement isn't necessarily related to any allowance to cross there, since that's already been established. What it's really doing is building off of that. We approved the plan unit development, which has a lot of detail in terms of design. We've approved Stormwater Facilities master plan for the site. So now, as the development agreement, this is outlining the developer's obligation to construct that road in order to be able to develop the property for what they're wanting to use it for. In addition to things we've spoken about previously, environmental obligations, permitting timelines and expectations. So just to put a framework of what this is, it is outlining that timing and obligation of what has to be built away by the developer.
Okay. I'm clear. Thank you. Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I previously, I have a lot of concerns with this development agreement and this contract in general, even more that have been raised since our last meeting, but I do want to focus on the Mikkasuki Greenway crossing. It's just insane that we're even entertaining this, going down this path of something that's so beneficial and great in our community. I have an eight-year-old son, I have a five-year-old son. I love Tallahassee's parks, I love Tallahassee's trails, and one of the main things we look for as parents are places we can take our kids and know that they're going to be protected and safe from vehicular traffic. And there are crossings on this path, but as we continue to march down a path where we don't respect the history of what we've created that makes Tallahassee so great, it gives me a lot of pause for concern. Questions on the project? Did we look at disconnecting at Miles Johnson and not creating a new connection across the Greenway?
Question. Mr. Reddick, I think you're probably the best...
And I would say, yes, there is a predetermined location of where that easement is for that connection that was recorded with the warranty deed. So that's what is established off of.
I understand there's a prerecorded easement, but that doesn't mandate a road connection be built. Did we look, did we work with during our negotiations with the developer, with their lobbyists, with their team? Did we talk about other possibilities with community benefit in mind?
And I would say we potentially looked at what the property owner's rights, vested rights were for where that roadway could go. And from there would be an evaluation with traffic engineering staff and potentially operational studies to know if that's a safe and appropriate location for roadway connection to Mikkasuki Road. And I will say it also contemplates the, in the plan unit development, the removal of the Miles Johnson connection there and improving the safety connection there for vehicular traffic onto...
Okay. So what I'm saying is this, you know, I don't agree with crossing the Greenway again. I think it's going to be detrimental and really be, not the death nail, but it's really going to impact people's enjoyment of the Mikkasuki Greenway to add this road connection. I'm willing to support everything in this development agreement if we go back to the table on that crossing and say we're not going to add another crossing to the Mikkasuki Greenway. There's a lot of things I disagree with. I'm willing to swallow all of it. If we bring the community in, we have that conversation, and we resolve this issue. We've done it before on other agreements. We did it with Summerbrook. We found compromise with the neighborhood. I don't think we can't come to a win-win solution to get this done without creating such a detrimental crossing. So that's where I'm at tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate it. Commissioner Matlow, the challenge will be, we've already approved this in the PUD, and that's not what we're dealing with tonight. I mean, am I correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. So in the PUD that the commission authorized, it allows for this crossing. The development agreement is simply that the developer pays for the road as opposed to the city.
Right.
So the PUD gives the property right to, which pre-existed the Greenway, and so that decisions have been made. The approval or not approval of the development agreement would not change that.
Okay. You want to follow up, Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, I will follow up. I understand exactly where we are, what's been done, and where we're at, but I'm saying there can be a willingness for us to work with the developers while we negotiate the development agreement and see where changes can be made. Nothing's been built yet, nothing, no tree has come down, no stones have been unturned. This project isn't too late to save a community asset. So while we're negotiating concurrency credits, while we're negotiating all these things in the development agreement, I mean, one, we need to recognize that we never had the conversation with the most active users of the Greenway. That's a problem on us that we didn't address on the forefront of it, to where we're at a development agreement where people are just finding out about it. That should be a red flag to everybody. We created a huge mistake that people who actively use this, the cyclist community have reached out to us, you know, all kinds of active users have reached out to us today. So we failed somewhere along the line already, and how can we rectify this situation, and how can we fix it moving forward? And that's my suggestion. I understand the city manager's position. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. I'm comfortable moving forward today, but I also want to stress the need of continuously working to minimize the impact to the Greenway as we possibly can. It's not uncommon to have a crossing across, you know, one of our multimodal bike paths or whatnot. I mean, I look at the St. Mark's Trail. It's happened. How do we just ensure the fact that we can provide public... I share the same sentiments that were mentioned earlier about pedestrian accidents that have happened, cycling accidents that have happened recently in our community. So, I mean, we need to continue to work to keep it as safe as possible. But again, the item before us tonight is simply the development agreement, which is the legal document of costing rights. It's not the PUD that, where that decision was made. That's already been passed by this commission. So if there's a motion on the table, I will be supporting the motion, move forward with staff recommendation of option number one.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Passes 3-2 with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter in dissent. We are on item number 14.05. Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.05 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-O-24, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida amending Section 14-3.302, 14-3.317, and 14-3.402 of the Code of General Ordinances relating to the police employees' pension provisions, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 23-O-24. The city of Tallahassee recently ratified the collective bargaining agreements with the local police benevolent association. During the negotiation, several pension items were revised. The proposed ordinance reflects these revisions and others that had not been updated.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have one speaker on this item. That speaker is Bernard Stevens. Bernard Stevens on item 14.05.
All right. Do we have any other speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Move for option one?
Second.
Option number one has been properly moved by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Do we have anything else to come before us at the public hearing?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we're on unengaged speakers. Mr. Cook, how many speakers do we have on unengaged?
One second, Mayor. We have approximately 10 speakers at this time. There may be a couple others that are brought to me, but at this point, we have 10, and the first is Mark Ocasaco.
Explain the process, please.
Yes, sir. Speakers will have three minutes each for their remarks. I will give you a heads up when you're at two and a half minutes, as will the light system in front of the mayor and mayor pro temp. It'll be green, and it'll turn yellow at 30 seconds, and then red.
Great. Wonderful. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Mark Ocasaco, 1689 Silverwood Drive. And thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners, for seeing me. Since early this year, with the support of our community and the city, our group Save the English Forest has been working on a Florida Forever New Project application for a 300-acre project called the English Forest Preserve located southeast of Tallahassee. Here's an update of our progress. In June of this year, the Acquisition and Restoration Council, or ARC of Florida Forever, held a first vote to determine which proposed projects for the April 2023 cycle would go to the next level. Our proposed English Forest Preserve had a successful first vote with a unanimous yes vote, although a few ARC members did express reservations about the small size of the project, but only 300 acres, and its awkward shape. In July, there was supposed to be an onsite survey of the proposed area by the ARC team. However, due to unexpected unfortunate complications, the survey had to be canceled the day before the scheduled date of July 18. While this was extremely devastating to us, we were reassured by Florida Forever, the first vote for the proposed English Forest Preserve still stands, and the onsite survey would be rescheduled as early as this November. If the onsite survey is a success, the second vote by ARC will take place in April 2024 and will determine which projects will be eligible to be on the Florida Forever list. While waiting for the survey, we have a backup plan, especially since some ARC members did express certain reservations about a proposed project. We will apply for a Florida Communities Trust, or FCT. While the state's Florida Forever program is a land acquisition program, the Florida Communities Trust is a matching grant program. Normally, this will require cooperation and involvement of our local city or county government. However, Artie White, the new director of place, had suggested Blueprint would be a better local entity, though we have been in the process of scheduling a meeting with the appropriate Blueprint staff. According to ARC members, much of our efforts put into the Florida Forever New Project application can be transferred to the FCT application. Thank you for listening to our update, and we will be sure to provide you with future updates. In the meantime, we look forward to your continued support for the proposed English Forest Preserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Mayor, is Dawn Orozco, followed by Cass Casanova. Dawn Orozco. Then we'll move to Cass Casanova, who will be followed by Oliver Cheese.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Cass, and I will not give you my address. So I'm here, I was hoping I wouldn't be the first speaker, so I wouldn't have to introduce it, but I'm a member of Students for a Democratic Society at FSU, and I'm here to support the Tallahassee Community Action Committee. They are putting forth a request, or not really a request, but a demand, for the city of Tallahassee to pass a resolution condemning the state of Israel for its crimes against Palestinians, especially in the last few weeks. As of right now, the media is portraying Palestinians resisting against apartheid and genocide as terrorists, and as an FSU student, we have seen that same rhetoric be parroted by people like President McCullough, Richard McCullough of FSU, the provost, and several important figures on campus calling Palestinians animals and barbarians, without mentioning the fact that just in the past week, the Zionist entity known as Israel has killed more than 6,000 children in Gaza and in the West Bank. Why at the city commission meeting? Well, because every year, more than 285 million of our tax dollars in Florida go to funding Israel and the genocide they are carrying out in Palestine. And our demand is that we divest from Israel as a state, as a city, at whatever level that we can accomplish that. The money that we send to Israel every year could pay the salary of every single teacher in Tallahassee, every single public school teacher in Tallahassee for every year, which is pretty interesting to think about when you think about how severely underfunded our schools are. You know, I'm a school teacher, and I see it every day. So, you know, it's interesting that we're deciding to send our money to a place like Israel. You know, Tallahassee has a sister city in Israel, almost every major city in Florida does, when the people here cannot afford to feed themselves, cannot take the bus because our infrastructure is so terrible. Every time I drive in the streets here, there's potholes. We can't even allocate money towards fixing our infrastructure, yet we have money to fund genocide in Palestine. So I'm just here and wanted to state my support for the Tallahassee Community Action Committee, and we need to divest from Israel and start spending some money on things that will actually help people, and we need to stand up and condemn the crimes going on in Palestine and stand up for Palestinians that are being affected right now here in Tallahassee. I yield the rest of my time.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Oliver Cheese. Oliver Cheese, followed by Emma Thomas.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Oliver Cheese, and I will not give you my address. I am a member of Students for a Democratic Society, and I'm here to support the Tallahassee Community Action Committee's resolution that the city of Tallahassee should back the Palestinian community in this city against the genocidal attacks of Israel and her supporters. Just yesterday, the United Nations Secretary General Antonio Guterres called out the terrible state which the Palestinian people have been kept in by the state of Israel. He said the Palestinian people have been subjected to 56 years of suffering occupation. They have seen their lands steadily devoured by settlements and plagued by violence. They have seen their economy stifled, their people displaced, and their homes demolished. This is a crime against humanity of the highest level, and the United States has been actively funding and supporting the state committing this crime against humanity. The city of Tallahassee has collaborated with Israel. It has a sister city in this terrorist state. The city commission must pass a resolution protecting Tallahassee's Palestinian community against racist and anti... and, what's the phrase? And anti-Muslim attacks, condemning the genocide of Palestinian... And anti-Muslim attacks, condemning the genocide of Palestinians at the hands of Israel and cutting all ties with the genocidal state of Israel, both the city's ties with Israel and any coordination between the Tallahassee Police Department and any policing entity within Israel. Continuing to stand with a regime which is actively displacing and massacring Palestinians does nothing to help our city's Jewish community against real threats of antisemitism which they continue to face. Instead, all it does is antagonize our Arab citizens by backing the very genocidal terrorist state which is murdering their friends and family. I have a Palestinian friend. A couple years ago, he had to watch his family's home be destroyed by the Israeli Defense Forces on the news. He had to go through school knowing that while he sat there in class, his family were being massacred by Israel. And now, the governor of Florida, Ron DeSantis, has declared that the people who oppose such a resolution, the people who oppose a genocide, are terrorists? We are not terrorists. We are supporting freedom fighters. We are supporting life and liberty for the Palestinian community in Tallahassee and worldwide. The city of Tallahassee cannot stand with Israel. Instead, it must stand on the side of peace, the side of truth, the side of justice, and the side of freedom. It must stand with Palestinians in Tallahassee. It must stand with Palestinians in Palestine, and it must condemn, in no uncertain terms, the genocidal state of Israel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emma Thomas.
Okay.
Emma Thomas, followed by Ravza Khyir.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Emma Thomas.
Could you pull the microphone? Thank you.
My name is Emma Thomas, and I will not be sharing my address. I want to start by also voicing my support for the Tallahassee Community Action Committee's resolution demanding the Tallahassee City Commission create a resolution demanding an end to U.S. aid to Israel and condemning the displacement and genocide of Palestinians. I demand an end to any future aid, partnerships, or relationships with Israel and the city of Tallahassee. I demand an end to any training, cooperation, or investments between the Tallahassee Police Department and any Israeli policing entities or forces. The U.S. is playing an active part in the genocide of Palestinians by giving millions of dollars in aid for Israel annually and offering support for a ground invasion of occupied territories in Palestine, by refusing to denounce Israeli displacement, bombing, and war crimes against Palestinian civilians, and by refusing to call for a ceasefire or the entrance of humanitarian aid into Palestine. The city of Tallahassee has a responsibility to call for an end to U.S. military aid in Israel and to make sure Tallahassee isn't contributing to genocide, denounce the ongoing genocide of Palestinians and the murder and hate crimes against Palestinians in the U.S., and provide public support to suffering Palestinians and Arab communities, want to hate crimes and threats against Palestinian Arab communities in our city. Stand with Palestine and U.S. aid to Israel. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Next speaker is Ravza Khyir.
Okay. Here's how this is going to work. We're going to give everybody the same opportunity to speak, and I'm asking you to work with me. Earlier in the meeting tonight, I asked everybody, both here at the dais and in the audience, to be respectful so that we can make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak. I hope you will work with me on this, okay? It's hard when you chant over me and the clerk for others who are coming to the podium to speak to be able to actually hear themselves or us to be able to conduct the business. So I'm asking everybody, we're going to make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak, okay? But please just work with us on this. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker, please.
Is Ravza Khyir, and then Dawn Orozco.
Thank you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, this is Ravza Khyir. I will not be disclosing my address. I came here with E C A G to support Palestine and condemn Israel for their actions for the last seventy-five years. Before I moved to America six, seven years ago, I was told this is a free country where you can talk about your opinions and you'll be safe. And within the last six years, this has been very obvious that it was all a lie. I do not feel safe, even at my campus at F S U. The president refuses to acknowledge the existence of Palestinian students on campus. I see it every day, walking around. And as a Muslim woman, Muslim presenting woman, I do not feel safe. I think there has to be a statement out there in support for the Palestinians who are Christian and Muslim, and even there are Jewish people in there who are dying. This is not about religion. This is about freedom. This is about land. We demand the Tallahassee City Commission create a resolution demanding an end to U.S. aid to Israel and condemning the displacement and genocide of Palestinians. Once we started talking about this throughout the last couple weeks, today I hear Ron DeSantis wants to stop every single organization on campus that are talking pro-Palestinian ideas. This is shameful. I am ashamed of the school I'm going for the last six years. I'm in grad school. Nobody prepared me for this, and from you Commissioners, I demand an end to any future aid, partnerships, relationships with Israel and the city of Tallahassee. I demand an end to any training, cooperation, or investments between the Tallahassee Police Department and any Israeli policing entities or forces.
You're at thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Dawn Orozco, and then Sadie Carlson.
Your name and address for the record, please.
So my name is Dawn Orozco. I live in three, two, three, one, two, so I live in Tallahassee. I'm going to be straightforward. I'm vice president for the Tallahassee Community Action Committee. I'd like to see a resolution passed by you all recognizing the genocide and the suffering of Palestinian people. The Health Ministry has stated that more than fifty-seven hundred Palestinians have been killed in the war, including roughly twenty-three hundred minors. I'm sure that number's increased just in the second since I started speaking. I know you all don't have a history of being revolutionary or necessarily spearheading ideas, but if it makes you feel any better, the Richmond City Council in California passed this similar resolution, five-one today, and it made the news. I'm going to keep it short. We demand that you all create a resolution demanding an end to U.S. aid to Israel, condemning the displacement and the genocide of Palestinians, demanding an end to any future aid, partnerships, or relationships with Israel, and demanding any training, cooperation, or investments between T P D and any Israeli policing entities or forces, especially knowing the fact that anyone that was tear-gassed here in the United States was tear-gassed by items made in Israel. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Is Sadie Carlson, followed by Delilah Pierre.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Sadie Carlson, and I live in the three, two, three, zero, eight zip code. If you've been paying attention to the news at all lately, um, excuse me, I didn't prepare a speech. Israel has been committing heinous war crimes against Gaza. The Prime Minister of Israel, Benjamin Netanyahu, has said that they want to raise Gaza to ruins. And my tax dollars are paying for that. That is unacceptable, completely unacceptable. This city needs to condemn this action, that needs to condemn the aid being sent to Israel. Any current or future aid that this city does with I D F or any other entities in Israel must end. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Delilah Pierre, and then Regina Joseph.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Delilah Pierre. I will not be giving my address for the record. I was on a call recently with Palestinian organizers, and a Palestinian organizer told me that he'd lost forty-six members of his family, if I'm correct. Forty-six members of his family wiped out and killed by the Israeli occupation force, by their continuing and escalating genocide and ethnic cleansing of Palestinian people. I cannot imagine what it is like to be Palestinian in the city of Tallahassee right now and see no support from either the city commission or county commission. The county commission passed a resolution honoring T. Payne, but they haven't said a single thing about Israel's war crimes and genocide against Palestinians. It shows where your priorities are. And the United States plays a direct role in Israel's occupation of Palestine. They're a country that gives billions of dollars in aid for Israel annually and offers support for a ground invasion of occupied territories. They're a country that trains with Israeli police forces, so the same forces that brutalized Black Lives Matter protesters also brutalized Palestinians. They're a country that paints liberation forces as terrorists while ignoring Israel's role in forcing Palestinians into open conflict with their oppressors. And the city of Tallahassee and Tallahassee Police Chief Lawrence Revel has bolstered police security for synagogues and churches, but hasn't done anything to check on suffering Palestinian or Arab communities. Your actions are heinous. They're cruel to Palestinian people, to Arab communities. A six-year-old was murdered in the United States of America for being Muslim. Our country is responsible for the deaths of Muslim people, for the deaths of Arab people, for the deaths of Palestinian people by promoting a sentiment that treats Palestinians as inhuman. This is wrong, and I don't know why y'all refuse to do anything to stand up for it. Tallahassee has a responsibility to end U.S. military aid in Israel and make sure we aren't contributing to genocide, to end its relationship with a sister city in Israel, to denounce the ongoing genocide of Palestinians and the hate crimes and repression taking place in the U.S., and to provide public support for suffering Palestinian and Arab communities. Our governor, Ron DeSantis, is trying to suppress Palestinian organizations. We must stand up and fight back against that. We need to. We demand the Tallahassee City Commission create a resolution demanding an end to U.S. aid to Israel and condemning the displacement and genocide of Palestinians. No future aid, partnerships, or relationships with Israel and the city of Tallahassee should exist, and our police department should not be training, cooperating, or investing in Israeli policing entities or forces.
You're at three minutes.
U.S. aid to Israel needs to end right now.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Regina Joseph, then Tavish Brian.
Right. Your name and address for the record, please.
Regina Joseph? I won't be giving my address. Before I start, Daley said that he wanted to make sure that we weren't chanting because he didn't want us to interrupt the speakers, so I have no problem having y'all say this with me. You can not necessarily chant, but just say with me, "Free, free Palestine."
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
It's times like this that that chant sounds like a prayer, and every time we say that chant, it really is a prayer for the thousands of Palestinian children whose lives have been stolen. It's for the seventy-five years of suffering that Palestinians have had to endure due to just the recklessness of the British Empire, which we can always say is almost always their fault, you know, just partitioning Palestine and making it so that people who have no connection to this land can remove people who've been there for hundreds and hundreds of years. And I'm sure some of y'all are very confused. You may not have known. I'm sure the police know, though, because they are on our texting list. You know, why are we here? Why are we talking about Palestine at a city commission meeting? And it's because we have to talk about Palestine, because this issue affects all of us, because we are at a pivotal moment in our life where we have to see years from now what side of history we will be on. Will we be on the side of justice? Will we be on the side of people who are fighting for liberation? Will we be on the side of people who are afraid to speak up but still do? Or will we be silent and be like people who collaborated with Nazis, be like people who collaborated with the Klan, be like people who allowed so much injustice to happen in our society? You cannot be neutral on a moving train. You have to pick a side. And I'm not going to lie, I was really scared. Me of all people, if y'all know me, you know I'm a firecracker. You know, I cuss these people out every other day. But today, it's just a much somber moment, because as everyone else has mentioned, Ron DeSantis is doing everything he can to stomp out anybody who can be remotely critical of Israel. And so I ask all of you to think about if you want to be on the right side of history. At a city commission meeting just like this in nineteen ninety, Dr. Ed Holyfield, who is one of the most amazing activists in this city, asked Tallahassee to divest from South Africa apartheid. Nelson Mandela stood.
Now you're at.
With Palestine. And so if we can do that in nineteen ninety, we can also do that now. And so I have one more prayer before I leave, and that is to say, "Free, free Palestine."
Thank you.
Free Palestine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Tavish Brian. Next speaker is Tavish Brian, and then Howard Kessler.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Tavish Brian, I will not be giving my address. In a recent interview on Israeli, I'm sorry, in a recent interview, an Israeli Jewish member of the Knesset, Dr. Afir Kasif, stated, "Antisemitism is a crime. Anti-Zionism is a duty." End quote. Today, we are doing our duty to resist Zionism. We demand the Tallahassee City Commission create a resolution demanding an end to U.S. aid to Israel and condemning the displacement and genocide of Palestinians. We demand an end to any future aid, partnerships, or relations with the Israeli, with Israel and the city of Tallahassee. We demand an end to any training, cooperation, or investments between the Tallahassee Police Department and any Israeli policing entities or forces. I stand in support with these demands. Palestinian health officials have reported that the death toll in Gaza has now reached six thousand five hundred, two thousand seven hundred of which are children. At least one hundred Palestinians have been killed in the West Bank by Israeli military forces and armed settlers backed by the forces since October seventh and before. And according to Bodir Hassan, an Amnesty International researcher on Israel and occupied Palestinian territories, Israel is arbitrarily detaining thousands of Palestinian workers and treating them as hostages. The United States is endorsing genocide by giving billions of dollars in aid to Israel on an annual basis. It must be made clear that Israel is a settler colonialist apartheid state occupying the people of Gaza and the West Bank, holding them captive in a concentration camp under full subjugation of their fascist regime. We must all demand an end to this ethnic cleansing and slaughter of the Palestinian Ceasefire now, stand with Palestine, end U.S. aid to Israel. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Howard Kessler. He'll be followed by Jason Carlos.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Howard Kessler, Four Way Plantation Road. Some of you may be familiar with an article from The Oklahoman about a judge, while conducting a murder trial, exchanged five hundred text messages with her bailiff. The texts mocked the physical appearance of lawyers, jurors, witnesses, derided the prosecutors. Think how you would feel if you or your family were caught up in the judicial system and the judge was not only not paying careful attention, but was distracted by writing texts ridiculing you or your family. I listened to Mr. Stanley Sims address this board, saying that he was made fun of by high-level administrative staff. I listened when Commissioner Matlow called out this gross misconduct and watched his attempt fall by the wayside, as three commissioners appeared to make light of the situation. What I expected to hear from the three commissioners and administrative leadership, I did not hear. Why didn't any of the three commissioners apologize to Mr. Sims? Why didn't Why didn't they say that this behavior is totally unacceptable and will not be tolerated? Why did I not see upper leadership in the administration stand up and apologize? I did hear one commissioner say she did not want to vote to the motion to direct the city manager to treat all members of the public with respect and dignity. Mr. Sims deserves an apology from all those involved, from the city manager to all upper management who made fun of Mr. Sims, and to those three commissioners who appear to have brushed off this issue off, the same three commissioners who did not vote yes to treat members of the public with respect and dignity. By not speaking up against such bad behavior, these commissioners are complicit, and their silence encourages more bad behavior. If staff and leadership have so much time during meetings to be able to text and make fun of the public, maybe there is not enough work for them to do. And if departments are overstaffed, this could be an opportunity to save the taxpayer money by reducing administrative staff and avoid raising taxes.
You're at 30 seconds.
Thank you. The condemnation and contempt of these commissioners and staff is not directed just to Mr. Sims, but to the public in general.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Jason Carlos, followed by Jonah Mundie.
Name and address for the record, please. Hello. Okay. Hi, my name is Jason Carlos. I live in the 32304 zip code. I'm here with students for Democratic Society at FSU, and I'm here standing in support and solidarity with TCAC's proposal for a resolution from the city commission to condemn Israel over its genocide in Gaza and the mass displacement of Palestinian people. We are right across from the street... We are right across the street from the office of Governor Ron DeSantis, the governor of the state of Florida, who is openly committed to making Florida a pro-Israel state, not a pro peace state, not a pro human rights state, a pro-genocidal apartheid government state. And is now currently going on a tirade, demanding the forced silencing and dissolution of activist organizations that are openly... that are expressing their free speech rights to denounce genocide and support human rights, and is openly called... even openly called for the deportation of Floridians who exercised their First Amendment rights to support the Palestinian people. Tallahassee, on its own, going straight to the local level, has a vibrant and flourishing Palestinian community. Just last Wednesday, hundreds of community members came out to Cascades Park in a peaceful demonstration to raise awareness of Israel's genocide, demonstrating not only how the Israel-Palestine conflict affects us right here at home, but also how the subjugation of Palestinians in Gaza, thousands of miles away, connects to the subjugation of all oppressed groups of people worldwide. So with TCAC's proposal for this resolution, we have just a simple demand. We demand that the city take a stand against oppression and make a commitment to divest from the agenda of an apartheid government at every single level, and instead make a commitment to supporting the victims of genocide, like every single government on the right side of history has done. Tallahassee's Palestinians deserve to know that their elected leaders recognize their struggle and that they recognize their right to exist peacefully. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Jonah Mundie is next, and then Samuel Dohler.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Jonah Mundie, 32303. I would like to call for supporting this statement condemning Israel's actions against the people of Gaza and severing all ties between Israel and Tallahassee City Commission, including the sister city relationship that Tallahassee maintains with Ramat al-Sharon in Israel. When there is a clear line between justice and between tyranny, we must stand on the side of justice. It's clear that Israel has no intentions for peace with the Palestinian people, and we need to stand up for Palestinian citizens in Tallahassee and living in Israel and the occupied territories that are rightfully Palestinian land. It would be unconscionable to think of a city maintaining a relationship with Cape Town, South Africa during the apartheid years. So why would we continue to maintain these relationships with an apartheid state in 2023? It doesn't make sense, and it is a slap in the face to the thousands of Palestinians who have been killed, many of whom are children, by a terrorist state. I recognize that we have to put out a strong statement, like in Richmond, California, in order to support the Palestinian community across the world, because it is clear that Israel will not back down and is continuing to escalate things despite condemnation from the United Nations and other groups. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Mayor, our next speaker is Samuel Dohler. We'll have about three speakers after that, including the next speaker, which would be Catherine Kurzweil.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Samuel Dohler, 1948 Northwest 130th Avenue. Two million civilians live inside that tiny strip that we call Gaza that is being deprived of food, water, and electricity. There's no escape. There's walls and sea on every single side, but what there are is bombs. I've heard a lot of people call Israel terrorist state. I believe this is a bit of a dull viewpoint. They are a state sponsor of genocide. And in the age of media, we have seen the rubble of people's homes being bombed and destroyed. We have seen the bodies pile up, and we have seen your indifference to the genocide of the Palestinian people. The only crime that Palestinians have committed is existing, and Israel has shown itself very much willing to correct that. And we should not stand by that with our money as our state becomes one of the worst states in education, one of the worst states in homelessness. As we continue to trend behind again and again and again, we somehow find room inside of our budget to bomb a foreign country of foreigners. You have had enough time to role-play as dictator of the international community. You have had enough time to spread chaos among the world. We're here to remind you that your government is here to serve the people. You're here to serve the workers. You're here to serve us. We do not have time for a crash course in Palestinian history. What we have time for is an immediate end to the supporting of the genocide of the Palestinian people in Gaza.
Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Catherine Kurzweil. Catherine Kurzweil. And then we'll hear from Ahmad Deraldick. And mayor, I'll correct my number to about a dozen remaining speakers.
Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Catherine Kurzweil, and I live in 32304. I'm the secretary for SDS on FSU, and I support everything TCAC has said today. As a student, I am appalled by the lack of support I'm seeing on campus, and I think it's extremely important that we condemn the atrocities committed by Israel. As a Jewish student and community member, I've received backlash for my pro-Palestine stance, and I really resent that, because I know that this has nothing to do with religion, and I'm tired of people perceiving this issue as such. This is about human rights and fighting for freedom. It is shameful that the U.S. is giving billions of dollars to Israel annually. It is shameful that U.S. propaganda depicts Palestinian liberation forces as terrorists. It is shameful that the U.S. is calling for a ceasefire to protect Israel but never once cared about protecting the lives of Palestinians, when Israel has tried to ethnically cleanse them for decades now. It is of utmost importance that city commission creates a resolution that denounces U.S. aid to Israel and condemns the genocide of Palestinians, that the city of Tallahassee ends all future aid and partnerships with Israel, that we end any cooperation between the Tallahassee Police Department and Israeli police forces, and that the city of Tallahassee responds and shows remorse for the hate crimes committed against Palestinian and Arab communities. If you support American aid in Israel, you don't care about people dying, you just care about certain people who die. Stand with Palestine, end U.S. aid to Israel. From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free!
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine!
Viva, viva Palestina.
Viva, viva Palestina!
I yield the rest of my time.
Our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Ahmad Deraldick. Ahmad Deraldick, and then Mohammed Nimer.
Before I started, I wanted to ask a member, Jim, if I could hand them this petition that I have as a petition delivery.
It might be easier just to hand it to her, and then we'll take it for the record. Thank you.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ahmed Dar Eldeek. I'm a Palestinian. I'm a Tallahasian. I'm a Floridian. I was born at Tallahassee Memorial Hospital, so this is a community I've been a part of since my birth. I'm a community member that's met and seen many of you before, and it's hard for me to really describe the words that I'm feeling, because it's not a time for talking. It's a time for us to act. We're supposed to be one community. You're supposed to represent me. You're supposed to be my voice. I'm somebody who was attacked by my own university, by the Florida Legislature, by our congressional representatives, and cities that I've never lived in, in the state of Florida. Yet I never heard one word from this commission to say anything, to reach out, to ask, "How am I?" Not once. It was an international repression campaign that I faced because I'm a Palestinian, because I stood for human rights, because I was a Senate president at my university that I could no longer represent students because of my identity. And I'm your constituent. I voted for you, and I'm asking you to be my voice, to be the voice of thousands of massacred Palestinians who have no voice, unjustly taken from us. I stand before you today, despite Israel's best efforts to stifle Palestinian resistance. No cage goes unchallenged. As we witness Palestinians in Gaza break through the wall that has been holding them in captivity for the past 16 years, in parallel to Israel's subsequent indiscriminate bombing of the coastal enclave, it is necessary and it is imperative for us to acknowledge that the true root cause of all of this violence is Israel. Israel's occupation, its apartheid policies, the ethnic cleansing of the Palestinian people for over 75 years is the source of this violence. We demand that the city commission creates a resolution that is demanding the end to U.S. aid to Israel.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
Condemning the displacement and genocide of Palestinians and ending any future aid or partnership. How many more thousands of Palestinians need to be bombarded and massacred for their voice, for our voice, for my voice to be heard? You must stand beside us and help ensure that at least the city of Tallahassee is complicit with the ongoing genocide, ethnic cleansing, and apartheid. It's a time right now to act.
You have three minutes.
And I ask you to stand up for the voiceless.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Mohammed Nimer, and then Victor Cardenas.
Our next speaker.
Okay. Victor Cardenas, and then Elijah Ruby.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. My name is Victor Cardenas, and at this time, I will not be sharing my address. Now, I'm simply a citizen who thinks that it's important to stand against genocide. I think that you would all agree, and you would all stand against fascism and genocide when it is acknowledged. So let's go over a few of Israel's actions. Let's classify whether it's genocide or not, so that way you can take a very clear stance. Firstly, the state of Israel has bombed over 50 hospitals and schools. I'll repeat that. Fifty hospitals and schools.
Shame!
Shame! Schools with children, hospitals with babies attached to ICU units. Is this just? No. The state of Israel has also... has also, single-handedly lowered the life expectancy and average age of Palestinian citizens. Did you know that over half of the Palestinian citizens are children? What army is Israel fighting? They are fighting an army of civilians. This is not a war, it is a genocide. I want to continue further, saying that the Prime Minister himself has made his intentions and the intentions of his government very clear when he stated that there are no innocents in Gaza. He's also stated that he will take any measure to end this war, and as we've seen from the actions of his government, that includes the killing of innocent children. Would you not call this genocide? I think it's important to take a stand when these sort of things arise, and I think that the city of Tallahassee has an opportunity to be better than our poor and vastly incompetent governor, and to take a stand against not only genocide, but fascism, because that is what this is. Israel is a fascist, genocidal apartheid state. Mr. Mayor, you and the rest of the council members here have an ability, have an ability that you were voted into, to demonstrate that you do not stand with genocide, fascism, or apartheid. There were many who thought appeasement was a good policy during World War II, that working with the Nazis was a good policy, that ignoring the issue was a good policy. Neville Chamberlain was one of them, and he will now forever be remembered in history as a man who was cowardice, who did not stand against fascism and genocide. Do not take the same actions. Stand with Palestine. From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free! Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Our next speaker, please. Elijah Ruby.
And then the next speaker would be Tavion.
Name and address for the record, please. My name is Elijah Ruby. Zip code 32303. All right. So I'm going to begin by echoing what the UN Secretary General, Antonio Guterres, has just said. What we witnessed a couple weeks ago was not created in a vacuum. It was not one attack that Israel responded to. What we've seen from Israel is over 75 years of an illegal occupation. We've seen over 20 years of an illegal blockade. Where are you going? We've seen over 20 years of an illegal blockade. We have seen illegal settlements. Israel is a criminal state. Terrorist bombings on the Palestinian people. Apartheid. This has existed. What we are seeing now is genocide. It is a Holocaust on the Palestinian people. And in 100 years, in 20 years, in 10 years, we will look at the people who not just aided and abetted, but supported the Holocaust of the Palestinians, the same way we look at the people who aided and abetted and supported the Holocaust of the Jews and the Slavs and the Roma in Germany. Tallahassee has a sister city in Israel while it's carrying out a Holocaust. It's if Tallahassee in the 1940s had a sister city in Dachau during Nazi Germany. That is what it's like to live in Tallahassee right now. Shame. It's shameful. Tallahassee's police department, the same police department that was never restructured after segregation, never changed. We have a police department that is trained by the people doing the Holocaust in Israel, the same people who trained the people doing the Mayan... doing the Mayan genocide and the police repression in Colombia, and almost every tragedy and crime you can think of in this century, and our Police Department is getting training from them. It's shameful. So what I am asking you, what I'm asking every single City Commissioner, including Diane Williams Cox, who's cowardly, cowering from the voters in the office, including Reese Goode, who was on his phone texting his mistress or playing Angry Birds most of this meeting, now he's hiding over there, I am asking, I am not just asking, I am telling you that in 10 years, in 20 years, you will be remembered like Texaco Oil is remembered today, like Volkswagen is remembered today. You will be remembered like the white supremacist who supported apartheid South Africa. You'll be remembered as perpetrating the next Holocaust, and your children will not forget that, your children's children will not forget that, we will not forget that. And I know, I know that the progressive people in Tallahassee, because we are a progressive city, the people who have been subjugated by the criminal Police Department that has never been restructured since segregation, is trained by Israel, the Arab people in Tallahassee, I know they will vote you out.
Thank you very much.
If they don't vote.
I'm asking you to please sit down so that everyone else can sit down.
By the way, let me make sure that we are all on the same page. The City Commission actually took action in 2019 in regards to all of our sister cities. We do not have a sister city program with any city anywhere in the world right now, correct, Madam Attorney? Because of the action that was taken in 2019. So I know many speakers have referenced, I'm not having a conversation, I'm speaking right now, so do note that we have taken action on all sister city programs back in 2019, and we currently do not. Yes, we did at one point, but we do not right now. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Tavion, followed by Rory Donahue.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tavion Dorsey. I live at 32304. I am the Vice President of FSU Students for a Democratic Society, and I firmly stand in support of TCAC's demands. Their first demand is that Tallahassee City Commission create a resolution demanding an end to U.S. aid to Israel and condemning the displacement of the genocide of Palestinians. We also demand an end to any future aid, partnerships, or relationships with Israel in the city of Tallahassee. We demand an end to any training, cooperation, or investments between the Tallahassee Police Department and any Israeli policing entities or forces. It is imperative that these things happen because I do not want my city to be supporting a genocide. Beyond that, as someone previously stated, there was a protest in support and solidarity of the Palestinians wherein members of Tallahassee's Arab, Muslim, and Palestinian community came out and showed their support. They mourned the loss of their loved ones, they mourned the loss of their home, and it is vital that this city show support for those people. By being silent, you are standing with the oppressor, and you are making the city an unsafe place to live for Palestinians, Arabs, and Muslims. Over the past month, since freedom fighters have begun their assault on Israel's illegal occupation of their lands in Palestine, we have seen hate crimes on the rise. We have seen protesters brutalized, FAU students brutalized by police. Protesters attacked in South Florida. In Chicago, protesters were threatened with firearms by Zionists. Also in Illinois, a Palestinian mother and son attacked. This mother was stabbed a dozen times, her son stabbed 26 times for nothing other than his Palestinian identity. I think of my six-year-old brother, I think of the ire he will face from white supremacists because of his skin color, and I am afraid for him, I am afraid for other Palestinian children in this country. I'm afraid for my Palestinian community members who are living in a city that has said nothing about the genocide that Israel is currently doing to their people. Take these demands seriously, because we aren't stopping here. We will make sure that these resolutions are passed, because it is vital that Palestinians, Arabs, and Muslims feel safe in this community, and that our tax dollars do not support a From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free!
I yield my time.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker is Rory Donahue, followed by Roxy Rico.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Rory Donahue. I live in the 32304 ZIP code. I come before you guys today with a heavy heart, given the recent actions going on in Palestine, and I am disgusted by it on a global, national, and local level. I find that the genocide that is going on over there is completely unreasonable, and more so the fact that we are funding it locally. Hearing the statistic that nearly $3 million of our tax dollars a year are going over there is completely absurd, when there are local issues going on here, let alone the fact that we are in vocal support of that genocide. I would ask that we, as a city, make a statement condemning the acts of Israel, divesting from our interests there, and working with other cities to try and stop this across the state and eventually the nation. I yield my time. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Roxy Rico, and then Isaiah Taylor.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Roxy Rico, and I will not be giving you my address. I'm here with TCAC and all the Palestinians in Tallahassee and across the world who are facing disgusting and heartbreaking acts against them, acts of violence and evil and hatred. And I'd like to also point out that Mayor Daley, it doesn't matter to me, or hopefully anyone here, that you claim we have no sister city in Israel, we are giving millions of dollars to have them bomb human beings, children, adults, I don't care what they are, they're humans. That's disgusting. That's disgusting. And you're complicit. I will not be complicit, we will not be complicit. You need to condemn the state of Israel and what they are doing right now to the people of Palestine, and you need to act in support of them financially, and beyond that vocally. We need to hear that you support us and the Palestinians here and everywhere, and we haven't heard that yet, obviously. And I'd also just like to point out that I'm disgusted by Richard McCullough and his inaction and vocal support of a genocide. Thank you very much. Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine!
Our next speaker, please.
Next, Isaiah Taylor. After Isaiah Taylor will be Robert Lee.
I also brought my phone with a timer, so I don't need a leash.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Isaiah Taylor, 32, excuse me, 321, Tallahassee, Florida. I'm actually visiting. So, well, first of all, I will back up what the last speaker said. Actually, Tallahassee does have several sister cities, including Krasnodar in Russia, that we terminated that relationship in 2021 following the invasion of Ukraine. You, Mr. Mayor, said we ended sister city programs in 2019, but according to WCTV, we terminated our sister city program with Russia in 2021. So I believe you, so I believe you're in error, sir.
Fire!
I also, we also have a sister city in Ireland, and I know that because I got a pen pal from 2004, so I don't know why in 2016 we would suspend relations with Sligo, Ireland. But anyway, getting to the issue at hand, trying to figure out what antisemitism is, okay, well, I will speak as a black person with autism. I think I know what discrimination is. Criticizing genocidal reactionary government is not antisemitic. That is a fact. That's not your feelings. What is antisemitic is when Ron DeSantis wants to make a snide remark concerning billionaire George Santos, when he wants to bring up something about phantom George Soros DA's, or even more, even more caustic, when someone like Marjorie Taylor Greene wants to say that wildfires are started by quote-unquote Jewish space lasers. See, those are antisemitic comments, but me criticizing the repressive actions of a government that happens to have a significant number of said religious group in question is not antisemitic, just like criticizing American foreign policy does not make me anti-American. I have 42 seconds, I don't need you to remind me of how much time I have. I will continue to stand with the Palestinian people. I will continue to stand with them, that does not make me antisemitic, and I don't care what any of you have to say about it, I don't care what DeSantis has to say about it, and I don't care what Biden or Netanyahu have to say about it, because I stand on my own two feet, and when I say "free Palestine," I say "free Palestine."
You're at three minutes.
I'm actually at six seconds.
Thank you very much.
And now, 3, 2, 1, and I yield my time. Thank you.
As Mr. Lee is coming to the podium, I know there's a bit of confusion. Mr. Manager, will you clear up the confusion on the sister city program, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and I think you're right. Israel in particular, in 2019, that relationship had been inactive for some period.
Correct.
And as a commission, you deemed it inactive. Now, in order to unravel it, there may be other moves, but for all intents and purposes, it was deemed inactive in 2019.
Right, and then specifically, we made a statement in 2019.
And as it related to our sister city in Russia.
To the relationship that did exist with the Russian city after the Ukrainians.
Yes, sir.
Clear the chain. One more outburst, and we'll just adjourn the meeting tonight. Please work with us so everybody has the opportunity to speak. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
It is Robert Lee.
Like you said, my name is Robert Lee, and I will not be giving out my address. I did want to point out also, while, you know, the mayor here, y'all like to really point out anytime, you know, there's even the slightest interruption from over here, but I find it very ironic that members of this group here can just walk off in the middle of people speaking. Y'all have time to speak amongst yourselves, double-check to see about the sister city, stare down at your phones, like it seems like Diane Williams Cox has been doing about this entire meeting. It's very frustrating and disrespectful to your constituents, so, you know, maybe just do a little bit better. So that being said, I did want to talk about some numbers that I have here. According to the U.S. Campaign for Palestinian Rights, this is a rough estimate of how much money comes from Tallahassee, from our federal tax dollars to Israel. So that estimate is $2,948,529. That's enough for 350 households to have public housing for a year. It's enough for 1,025 children to receive free or low-cost health care. It's enough to hire 32 elementary school teachers, which I know Florida has, you know, severe shortage of right now. That's enough for 8,394 households to have solar electricity produced for a year. 78 students to have their student loan debt canceled. I'm sure a lot of the people behind me would appreciate their student loan debt to be canceled. And it's enough for over 2,095 respirator masks. You know, with the recent surge in COVID numbers, I feel like there's a lot better places our federal tax dollars may be going. Now, I'm aware that y'all may not have direct control over our federal tax dollars, but what you can do is fulfill the demands that we've all been saying here. Tallahassee can create a resolution demanding that we end U.S. aid to Israel and condemning the displacement and genocide of Palestinians. We can stop any future aid or partnerships, so, you know, we may not have a sister city anymore, but again, let's demand that we not have one in the future with a genocidal state. We demand an end to any training, cooperation, or investments between the Tallahassee Police Department and any Israeli police forces or entities. Like several people behind me have already mentioned, Israel has funded countless genocides, not just against Palestinians, but against people around the world. My mother emigrated here from Central America. I have friends and family that were victims of the Mayan genocide in Guatemala, of genocides in Nicaragua, of genocides in El Salvador, that the U.S. and Israeli forces have funded and trained.
You're at 30 seconds.
So let's stand on the right side of history and condemn genocide, and stand on the right, on the right side of history, you know, for human rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Mira, or Myra. Then, Mayor, we have either one or two more speakers if one of our earlier persons has returned.
Okay. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Mira, and 32309. Okay, so I didn't really prepare anything, but I just came to talk to you guys as a Palestinian American. I was raised in Tallahassee my entire life, elementary school, middle school, half of high school, then I got up and left Palestine for a few years. Ended up living there five years, came back here to Florida State, bachelor's degree, graduate school, and law school right now. So I think you can say Tallahassee is home for me, pretty much. And I have been extremely discriminated on campus through my university's president, and I can tell you, anyone who's ever met me, any professor, I was a graduate assistant, any department head at FSU can tell you pretty good things about me, or I wouldn't be where I'm at today, I'll tell you that for sure. And I'm not a terrorist, I'm not inhumane, or someone who doesn't deserve rights. We all deserve it. Every one of us deserve it. I don't care what religion, I don't care anything. But when my president goes and says an email showing only condolences for the Israeli lives lost, yes, innocent lives were lost, and I'm sorry, and I agree, but how about us? More than 4,500 Palestinians have lost their lives. I do not focus in any class I've attended the past two weeks, I'm sure you ask any other Palestinian, any other pro-Palestinianist room, they could tell you the same thing. I have cried, I have no more cries, tears left. My dad is stuck in Palestine right now and not able to leave because he's Palestinian. He's American, but he's Palestinian. We can't leave. So yes, my emotions are pretty high at this time. And to find no support in the Tallahassee community, which I've dedicated my whole life to, and have pretty good job opportunities here, and place my time and efforts in, not going to name them, but I'm pretty known in my community, and to see this kind of support, shameful.
Shame!
My Tallahassee friend, family friend that I grew up around, she's Gazan, she's currently stuck in Gaza. She worked at Hartsfield Elementary School her whole life, art teacher. Go look at Tallahassee Democrat, go look at New York Times, what they said about her, pretty good things. Pictures of her holding the hands of African-Americans and white women, white children in our community, helping them, stuck in Gaza, fighting for her life? I'm not able to reach her, her son is here, her grandchild's here, no one's able to reach her. Every day we wake up and say, "Are you alive?" Is that a normal Texas son? I don't think so. That's not normal. That is not normal. And I'm just waiting, and I hope we don't have to wait, by praying for the day for her to come home, because she's been sitting at the border, Al-Rafa border, every day for the past two weeks, hours.
You're at 30 seconds.
And denied entry. Tallahassee-owned. So if you guys don't care about the Gazans, fine, care about the citizens here, care about me, care about Wafaa Saka who is stuck in Gaza, care about Ahmed who's also a Tallahassee person, Palestinian, there's so much more in your community. We are a bunch, you might not know it, but we are a ton, and I can name a whole bunch for you. Please care for us, and please, we're really hurt at this time. At least say sorry for your lives that have been lost. Sorry that you guys are saying that genocide is not okay. Sorry that you say my life matters, because it sucks to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Kyra Dinsmore.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Kyra Dinsmore, and I'm not giving out my address. You, whose title of the commission falls short of your work, do not represent me. Allow me to address instead the people of this city, these peoples who choose to be pawns of the fascist state that has thus far refused to denounce the war crimes committed by Israel and followers yet to continue to label the genocide of thousands as fair, mesky combat. The U.S. continues to aid and abet these humanitarian travesties, and we, the people of Tallahassee, we, the people of the United we, the people of the United States, demand an end to any future aid partnerships or relationships with the colony of Israel in the city of Tallahassee. We demand the Tallahassee City Commission create a resolution demanding an end to USAID to Israel and condemning the displacement and genocide of Palestinians. We demand an end to any training, cooperation, or investments between the Tallahassee Police Department and any Israeli policing entities or forces who have provided themselves to nothing but hostile towards the civilians. Until our demands are met, you will never represent us.
Our next speaker, please.
Mayor, I'm checking, I had called earlier Mohammed Naimer and did not have anyone respond, and so that continues to be the case, I think, so that was the last speaker.
All right. Anything else coming for the commission?
One more thing.
We stand adjourned.